Good evening, everyone. I'm Michael O'Reilly, Chairman of the Town and Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. And this is the regular meeting for March the 4th, 2021. The time is 7:03 PM. And we're going to start the meeting. I'm going to read some information. On March 14th, 2020, in response to the COVID pandemic and an effort to reduce the risk of transmission by virtue of attendance at public meetings, Governor Lamont suspended in-person open meeting requirements. Accordingly, the Town of Monroe will like to go to a meeting. Any members of the public who wish to submit written information relative to the business set forth on the agenda may do so up to one hour in advance of the meeting by electronic mail. Notice is hereby given that this electronic public meeting shall permit the public to view or listen anonymously, and when permitted, participate in real time, be recorded and posted to the town's website within seven days, and be made available to the public within a reasonable amount of time. In addition to standard parliamentary procedures as outlined on the agenda, the following special rules shall apply. Please mute your microphone so as to reduce background noise at any time you are not speaking. Prior to speaking and on each occasion, each speaker shall clearly state their name and title for the record. Use of the chat feature is prohibited. So we're going to call the roll. And I believe we'll have to seat. Just shout out if you're here, Commissioner Amayini.
Here.
Commissioner Condon.
Here.
Commissioner Ambrosi.
Here.
And Commissioner Westland. Not here. Commissioner Panici. Not here. And Commissioner Schneider is moving away and has resigned his position. So I guess, Ryan, we're going to need to seat someone who's next on the list.
The only person here is Nicole, so Nicole's seated.
All right. I didn't finish calling the attendants. I don't think I got Nicole. Nicole.
I'm here. I'm here.
Georgia Cantores.
Here.
Rich Schultz.
Here.
And Sarah Stroud.
Yeah.
And those of you who are not, didn't get the memo, Will Agresta resigned his position, I believe, as of yesterday, and he has a new position. I'm not sure where, Rick. I don't remember where you told me.
North Branford, Town Planner, North Branford.
North Branford. All right, so that's some of our business. Nicole is seated. Next on the agenda is general public participation. If there are any members of the public here tonight that would like to speak or make business known to the commission, that is not before the commission tonight, that is not on the agenda tonight, or that is not likely to come before the commission in the near future, now is the time to do so. Please make yourself known. One more time, are there any members of the general public here tonight that would like to speak on any topics not before the commission? Hearing none? Then we'll move on to a public hearing. So there are two linked public hearings. The first is RAA 2021-01, file number 101 5E, which is the last mile support facility text amendment. We started hearing that last, the last meeting. So we will continue that tonight. And we also have SEP 2021-01, file number 1626A, which is the SEP for 10 Victoria Drive. Ryan, do you have the notices for that? I don't think we did not start that last time.
No, I have a notice for RAA 2021-02, file 1016E, and then I also have the notice for RAA 2021-03, file 10170, and then the SEP 2021-01, file 1626A.
So we did open the call for the text amendment at the last hearing. If we're going to hear these two items in tandem, Ryan, we're just going to need you to read the call for the SEP for 10 Victoria.
So just the SEP. Okay, I'll go ahead and read that now. Planning and zoning commission Monroe, Connecticut, noticed a public hearing to be held March 4th, 2021. In accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, March 4th, 2021, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via go-to meeting concerning the following. SEP 2021-01, file number 1626A, 10 Victoria Drive, I-3, special exception permit application for the construction of commercial vehicle facility consisting of a 10,000-square-foot building with offices, surface parking lot for 400 vehicles, and necessary site improvements, including the use of onsite vehicle servicing for a property located at 10 Victoria Drive, Assessor Matt 12 lots 447/1 in the industrial 3 district. FSI Acquisitions LLC, applicant, Gen 4 LLC owner, postponed from 2/18/21. Published invoices Wednesday, February 3rd and 10th, renoticed on February 24th, as well as noted on the Town of Monroe website on February 22nd pursuant to Executive Order 7 I, paragraph 19, subpart C. Complete details and copies of all material associated with the above matters are on file and available for viewing in the Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices by appointment and on the town's website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Rick, do you have the exhibits?
Yes, for SEP 2021-01, exhibit 1, application supporting materials 2, stormwater management report, number 3, traffic study, number 4, proposed last mile support facilities plan, number 5, land development plans, number 6, town engineer comments, 7, certified mailings, 8, conservation commission correspondence, 9, site plans revised, 10, stormwater report revised, 11, response to town comments, 12, response to conservation commission, 13, OSA and Connecticut DOT right-of-way plans, 14, updated certified mailings. That is it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rick. So who do we have for 10 Victoria Drive tonight?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Donough. I'm an attorney with an office at 147 Broad Street in Milford, Connecticut. I'm here tonight on behalf of FSI Acquisitions LLC, which is the contract purchaser of the property located at 10 Victoria Drive, which is in an I-3 zone. As we've just been discussing, there are two applications before this evening. The application that we opened, the public hearing that we opened for the application to amend your zoning regulations to permit commercial vehicle facilities in the I-3 zone, and then also the hearing that we're opening this evening, which is a special exception application to locate a commercial vehicle facility at 10 Victoria Drive. As we noted two weeks ago, there was an issue with the mail notices for the special exception public hearing, so we have renoticed all the neighbors again, and as Rick has just mentioned, we have submitted a certified mail receipts for the record. One other housekeeping item, we also note that the property was the subject of an inland and wetland agent approval, which is dated January 29th, 2021, after Denise Halsted, your inland and wetland officer, was authorized by the inland and wetland commission to issue that approval, and a copy of that approval has been submitted into the record as well. As you'll recall, we had a very productive discussion on the regulation amendment several weeks ago, and we can certainly revisit that application, but we want to focus initially this evening on the special exception application. The subject property at 10 Victoria Drive consists of 25 and 3/4 acres. As we discussed generally last time, the property was previously approved for Walmart in 2014. As you'll see, our proposed development envelope is somewhat less than what Walmart proposed. However, since that approval and since Walmart decided not to go forward with their project, there really has been no meaningful activity related to the site, largely because of the challenges that we discussed at the last hearing. We are proposing a commercial vehicle facility on the site that complies with all relevant standards and new regulations with regard to all boat requirements and all lighting and landscaping requirements, including a proposed lane which requiring a 100-foot buffer between the edge of pavement and the property line of any residentially zoned property. As you'll see, we propose an extremely robust landscaping plan that will enhance the existing mature vegetation surrounding the site, and that vegetation, combined with the fact that the site sits below most of the surrounding properties, including Route 25, will ensure that the views into the site will be extremely limited. There are three presenters with me, all of whom are from BL Companies. First is our civil engineer, John Schmitz. Second will be our landscape architect, Wayne Violet. And then third is our traffic engineer, Mike Deion. And as you'll note, that throughout the course of the presentation, there will be very minimal impacts from any source, including traffic. And I want to reemphasize that even though this type of use is permitted to have maintenance or fueling facilities, we are not proposing any of those, which is, as we indicated last time, is important for your local businesses because all these drivers and all the vehicles will be utilizing local businesses for all their service needs. So with that, I want to turn it over to Josh Schmitz, who will walk you through the site plan.
Thanks, John. For the record, John Schmitz, civil engineer, BL Companies, 355 Research Parkway, Meriden, Connecticut. I'm going to share my screen and walk through the various plans in regard to the
It'll be one second.
Sure. Okay, you should all be able to see what I'm seeing, which is an aerial view of the existing site. The site is outlined here in red for what's again, as Attorney enough indicated, the site is I-3 zone, industrial district. Use would be commercial vehicle facility. And we're surrounded by multiple zones. To the north of this, of the property, you could see residential single-family homes, which are in the RF1 zone. They're on Pheasant Lane, as well as properties to the east of the site, which would be to the right. North, north in this view is straight up the page. Residential property is on the east side, also in RF1 zone on Eastdale Road. To the south of the property is another, rather, I-3 industrials property. That's the Victorinox facility that directly abuts us. We also share an access drive with that facility. To the west, to the left side, there's some B2 properties. There is a Ole soccer facility, and then some other properties fronting both on Route 25 as well as on Victoria Drive. And you can see the driveway there extending toward the west, and Route 25 is, runs along the left side of the page up and down. We have a signalized driveway at that location. The topography in general, as you can tell, it's disturbed. The perimeter of the site has been left intact with vegetation along the north, as well as along the easternly boundaries. Along the east side, we also have, rather, the west side. We also have wetlands and the Paquonic River that flows, west edge of Paquonic, that flows from the north to the south, right, parallel to the site. It does cross the road, add a bridge, just just west, rather, of our, of our entrance to our facility. I'm going to show you an overlay of the facility, the proposed facility on the existing, the existing site. The grades in the area are varied. Obviously, the area of the site that's disturbed in the center is relatively flat. There's been some mining operations historically. Grades along the road, Victoria Drive, where we'll tie in, are around 310 to 300 feet. Grades to the, further to the east, the properties, residential properties up on the hill are around 355 to 360 feet. Properties to the north, approximately 325 feet in elevation. And Victorinox is slightly lower than us also, around 300, 290 feet. And, and again, as Attorney enough indicated, we are somewhat in a bowl. There is a valley. The Paquonic has carved through, and so we're, we're more or less the bottom of that area. Though we are above the floodplain with all the buildings that we have. With regards to the proposal, what we're looking at doing is developing this site with a commercial vehicle parking facility. We'll have two buildings on site, one main building. I'll zoom in here a little bit. At this location, which would be a proposed 10,000-foot facility, and then a smaller gatehouse right at our entrance at the end of Victoria Drive. It would be a gated entry, so there would be a security in the gatehouse, which would control access in and out of the facility. The parking, approximately 43 parking spaces provided for the building, which meets the requirement, as well as 668 van spaces throughout the entire parking area. The area has been designed to meet code, that's interior landscape requirements, meaning that we have a 10% interior landscaping. There are islands throughout the parking lot. We do have some retaining walls along the eastern and southeastern corner of the property at this location, where there'll be some material removed. I will jump to another colored rendering of the site. And let me just get some of the grading plan. I'll walk you through some of the because we're on Victoria Drive, and there are other facilities on there. There's already utilities underground throughout the, throughout the area that are available to us to use. All utilities currently are underground. The only utility that we'll need to provide for is a septic system, an underground septic system for the building itself. We've been in contact with Monroe Health District, Santarian, and Matt, Matt Bertoli. A while back, we did our test pits and designed a septic system to provide sanitary for, for the building. With regards to stormwater, what we've done is try to mimic what's going on today. As I've indicated, properties to the, to the east of the site are around 355, 360 feet, and the site drains today towards the Paquonic River, here indicated by a light blue line running north-south on the left side of the development. So all of our drainage today drains that area. Some smaller areas to the north drain into wetlands to the north, as well as to the northwest of our site, and some minor areas drain adjacent to Victoria Drive and the driveway to the Victorinox facility. What we've done is create, again, maintaining those flow patterns is to manage our proposed flows by creating three detention areas. Obviously, we're going to be adding, adding impervious area to the site where there is none today, disturbing approximately 14.9 acres of the site overall. So as Attorney enough indicated, we're about 24.75 acres overall on the site. We'll be disturbing about 14.9 acres, which is, is less than what was previously approved for the Walmart facility. And out of that, approximately 10 and a half acres of the site will be impervious area, both buildings and parking. So as a result, we'll be increasing the runoff from the site, and in order to mitigate the increase in runoff, we'll be detaining the stormwater. And that's a requirement of your regulations, as well as required by state drainage guidelines and the water quality manual. We have three systems to handle the stormwater, two above-ground ponds. I'll zoom in a little bit here. One is at the northwest corner of the site, and I'll circle that. That is at this location. That is one above-ground detention pond. And we have a underground chamber system, which will be located under the parking area in this location. The underground detention system is similar to a septic system in that it, there are underground chambers under the parking, and water can infiltrate into the ground as well as runoff through pipes. The third detention system is in the southwest corner of the site. There's an existing detention basin in this area today, and we'll be enlarging that and also using it for detention to hold stormwater. One thing to, to be aware of is that all stormwater that's collected on the site prior to getting into these detention basins, all stormwater will run, be routed through hydrodynamic separators. We have four proposed on the site in total, and we're proposing at this point that they be Fort Sentry models. All of them are sized to handle 80% total suspended solid removal, again, in compliance with the stormwater quality manual. What that does is it keeps floatables and sediment out of the, out of the detention systems. And that's important, and not only for treatment purposes, but because we'll be infiltrating first inch of runoff. That first flush, which is many times loaded with contaminants, will be, will be filtered out through the hydrodynamic separators, and then that first inch of water will be infiltrated into the bottoms of the ponds, as well as into the bottom of the detention system, the underground system, which has a bed of stone. In addition to that, part of the treatment train approach to treating water, each of the catch basins on site, and there's a network of catch basins throughout the site that'll collect runoff. Each of those basins will have a hooded outlet, as well as a deeper sump to catch larger particles. The hooded outlet does a good job of catching any, any floatables, any paper cups or, or cans, soda cans, anything like that that would be floating. It keeps those, those objects from, from heading downstream, getting into detention systems, and ultimately keeps them away from, from the natural resource of Paquonic River. When we reviewed our analysis, the pre and post, what we look at is we try to maintain, meet the guidelines that are required of us, and that's a zero net increase in peak flow rates. We've done that. We've reviewed the two-year, the 10, 25, and the 100-year storm. And in all four of those storms, we reduced the, we marginally reduced the peak rate of runoff for those, and that's all outlined in the stormwater maintenance manual we put together. At the end of the manual, there's also an O and M plan, which is the operations and maintenance plan. That's an important document because it, it provides for the instruction manual, basically, for the owners to understand how to maintain the system. Stormwater system is only as good as, as the operation and the maintenance. It's not maintained, doesn't operate well. And so the, the manual is put together as a guideline, an instruction manual for the owners to, to understand the facility. Employees who would be here on a daily basis, security people, maintenance people, would be, have an understanding of how the system operates. And then there's yearly maintenance requirements as far as cleaning and things of that nature. With regards to erosion control that's in place, we provide erosion control plans for the site. There's a best management practices that we put together to handle erosion control during construction. Again, the idea is to protect natural resources to the wetlands and to the river. Some of those, some of those items, some of those elements include temporary construction entrance at our driveway, perimeter silt fence, which will be installed around the entire limited disturbance of the site. Inlet protection at catch basins that are existing, that are already in the road, as well as diversion swales to move the water to where we want to get it, which is basically into temporary sediment traps. There'd be several of those throughout the site, two of them located in the areas where detention ponds are located. Those will get converted at the end of construction. Obviously, water runs downhill. So those, those systems are located in areas where, where water will run today, and will run to the future when we divert it with the, with the diversion swales. There are also lighting plans included, as well as landscaping plans, and I will I'm just going to switch back briefly to the aerials. Just wanted to point out one other thing before I wrap up a little bit, is that, as you can see on this plan, again, where the disturbance is, but the, the development, and I'm going to outline roughly where our detention area is. We have one pond in this area. When we were discussing the project with the wetlands officer and staff previously, getting to this board, there was discussion about how we could work outside of our limited disturbance and, and create some, some more vegetation areas that had been disturbed to restore those areas. And so what we've done is to, on the plans, you'll see where we're adding some conservation seed mix along these areas to the, to the west side of our property to supplement what we're doing out there today as far as plantings go, like to provide a little bit additional vegetation that will grow in the future, again, providing a better buffer to the wetlands and restoring some of the areas that were disturbed previously. And also, speaking of restoration, there's also an area on the far east side of the site, up in, in this area of the site, towards the end of, of this road up here, where we'll be restoring this area again with not only conservation seed mix, but a robust row of plantings, a triple row of evergreens. And I'll let Wayne Violet talk a little bit about that, but those were improvements that were also requested of Walmart. Obviously, that never happened, so that area then has been left in the same condition it always was. And so we were asked to, to add that, and the plans reflect that we are going to provide those plantings as part of this development. So what I do now is, is I'm going to stop my share and allow Wayne Violet to, or our landscape architect, to talk about landscape architecture and the planting plan, and I'll be available for questioning at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, John. My name is Wayne Violet, Senior Landscape Architect with BL Companies. Do I have the ability to share my screen, or could I request access now?
You should have that now.
Yes, it looks like it's coming my way. Great. Great. Can everyone see the screen? Right now, we'd be looking at a rendered site plan, which also includes the landscaping. That's the view that we're looking at, at the moment. So the intention, I'm going to walk you through general layout and scheme for our landscape plan, how we approach the site, and talk about different components as we do our walkthrough. First off, with the landscape plan, as Attorney enough and John had just talked about, we have prepared, in our opinion, a zone, zoning compliant landscape plan. And what that means is we feel like we're meeting the requirements for buffer yards, landscape buffers, and also that interior parking requirement for landscape space. So wanted to mention that right off the top, that we believe we have a zone compliant plan that will enhance this site after development. Starting with our planting scheme along Victoria Drive and part of Route 25 right at our entrance to the site, we have proposed, as you can see on the screen, a large number of canopy street trees, typical street trees that you might find, a large canopy, providing shade, providing, you know, that structure along Victoria Drive. Typically, those are located, you know, anywhere between 40 and 50 feet in center to really create that rhythm entering the site. As a ground plan for this particular zone, we are proposing a lawn area, maintained lawn area, really kind of create a, you know, attractive and well landscaped entry into the site along Victoria Drive. In regards to our buffers, John had alluded to a little bit, and I'm going to expand on that, which, we'll start on the north, north side buffer between our site and the neighboring residential. There is actually a very good stand of mixed evergreens, but primarily pine, as you're seeing noted on the plan here. Just roughly in this area, there's an existing stand of evergreen plant material, evergreen vegetation along that kind of cleared edge. The intention of this application is that existing vegetation will remain, and we'll do a good job as far as screening this particular site from the residential neighbors. In addition to that existing evergreen buffer, there is a contiguous buffer there as well, just behind that evergreen buffer that, that will remain and provide in-season screening in addition to the existing evergreen to remain. Along the eastern side of the site, kind of the southeastern side of the site, again, there's an existing, well-established evergreen buffer. Our retaining wall and rating is coming close to that existing buffer. Part of this application, we are proposing for that existing vegetation to remain. But, and that should do a pretty good job as far as screening along the eastern side of the site. John was just talking about this area. John was just talking about this area here, which will be restored, and we will be providing supplemental buffer that consists of a mixed planting of types of spruce trees, really going to create a great edge that will provide some diversity for that particular buffer in that zone. And along the southern property line, we are proposing a staggered row of white pine trees to really help create a separation and buffer with the neighboring property to the south. As far as the parking lot landscaping, again, we are meeting the minimum requirements. The parking lot itself, there is a large network of landscape islands. Those landscape islands, as you can see on the screen, and I'll zoom in just to see a sampling of them. The typical planting scheme is we are proposing canopy, large canopy trees within these particular landscape islands. We are establishing a ground cover between a mulch ground cover and in some of these islands, a vegetative ground cover. Because these islands are so spread throughout the parking area as these are growing in, which these will start at a three-inch caliper or larger, will really create a nice, a nice amount of shade for this particular parking area. As far as those canopy trees, we're using a diverse mix of plantings. It's not all one monoculture scheme. We're using a variety of oaks, maples, plane tree, honey locusts, and sweet gums, primarily throughout the parking area, primarily native species that will do well in this site condition. Ground establishment throughout the site and throughout the scheme here is we're typically using, and we're attempting to utilize, lawn in limited areas. What that means is lawn typically requires some of the most maintenance, and limiting the amount of lawn in this particular development, just to a few areas, as I mentioned, along the Victoria Drive coming in, and a few areas at the entrance. But primarily around the perimeter, we have proposed a conservation or low-maintenance seed mix. That's typically comprised of native grasses and wildflowers and things that are going to really do well in that particular condition to reestablish the vegetation along the perimeter. For the stormwater areas that John was just walking us through, we have two above-ground stormwater areas. We are proposing a well-adapted wet seed mix that'll include anything from rushes and sedges, things that can really tolerate, you know, being inundated for a period of time, but also withstand a dryout period when those basins are not inundated with water. We are proposing a native adaptable mix for those two particular stormwater areas on the site. And last, I just wanted to mention the overall planting scheme for the project. We typically have used and are proposing on the site primarily native species, including trees, shrubs, and ground cover. There are a few species on our plant list that are not native locally to the area, but are well-adapted and used regularly in similar site conditions. And we've seen a strong performance from those particular species. But primarily, our landscape plan includes native species that we think will be there for a long time to provide the shade and character that the site needs. So that's a quick overview of the landscape plan. I will be available after we conclude the presentation for questions and anything in that particular way. But now I'll be passing it to, passing the baton to Mike Dion for presentation.
Thank you, Wayne. And if I could ask for presentation nobility as well, that would be appreciated. For the record, my name is Mike Dion. I'm a senior engineer with BL Companies in the Traffic Group. Let me try to get this presentation on the right screen, or if I can switch screens. So everybody can see it. I have been with BL Companies for two and a half years, and we are at 10 Victoria Drive. I will just recap some of what Schmitty had talked about. It is an off-site parking lot for a delivery station. The site was previously approved for a Walmart. And what we did is we did a very large traffic study. We did traffic counts at nine separate intersections. We did AM, PM, and midday peak hours, which is your 7:00 to 9:00 AM, 11:00 to 1:00 PM midday, and 4:00 to 6:00 PM in the PM. These counts were done in July of 2019, so they were pre-COVID. So the volumes are, we feel are good. They were sent over to the Connecticut DOT, and they have looked at them and approved them. What else we did is we looked at a field inventory out there. We went to each intersection, and we took photographs. And we want to verify the roadway arrangements out there and the geometry to make sure that they match what's actually on the traffic signal plan, so we can analyze the data. And what you look at is, there's also historical 24-hour data out there that we look at. So that's all available to us. And what we do with that data is we projected it out to 2021, which is this year, we're hoping our construction, everything's operational. We reached out to the DOT to see if there are any other proposed developments in the area. Nothing was identified, so we took what we had for counts and just progressed them out to 2021. And that's what we call our background traffic. And then what happens is we take the, what we anticipated had generated trips by the client. And what we expected to operate like is what they, delivery stations are doing now is they've taken a lot of their traffic out of the peak hours to try to not impact the traveling public as much. So what happens is that around 9:00, 10:00 or so in the morning, a delivery driver will come to the site, he'll park his personal vehicle, get into a delivery van, go to the, go to a delivery station, get loaded up with packages, and then go out to make deliveries. What happens then is that they go out for approximately eight to 10 hours, make their deliveries, and then come back at the end of the day. They will park their car, their delivery van in the parking lot, into their passenger car, and leave the site. So what we're looking at is the site's traffic generator for this. And as you can see, as we said, it was previously approved for a Walmart. And what you can see is the Walmart traffic is a lot higher than what would be anticipated with this development. We anticipate in the PM peak hour, about 115 trips at the site. And that, that's just accounting for if delivery vans come back early or if they, you know, they, they end their time, if it's an eight-hour shift, they might come back a little bit before 6:00 or around 6:00. So we wanted to account for that traffic. And then on the Saturday shopping peak starts at 11:00 o'clock, so we anticipate the vans leaving the site until about 11:50. So we wanted to capture some of that traffic as well. And if you look at the difference in the traffic generated by the Walmart and what we anticipate, in the PM peak hour, it's, you know, a total of minus 84 trips. And on a Saturday, it's a total of minus 509 trips. So you can see it's a big difference in the amount of cars that were participating in the network. Now, we did not say that it's a minus in our traffic study, just to make you aware of that. We did use our numbers for our traffic analysis. And with our projected traffic and the background traffic that we discussed, we took the generated traffic numbers, and what we do with them is we put them into a program called Syncro. And what this traffic sync program does is it analyzes the intersections and it calculates a value for delay. And this, this delay is assigned a letter grade, just like you're in school, a grade A through F, with A being the best and F being failing. And what we found out there, did a lot of traffic study, the numbers are out in Trumbull, so I didn't think you guys would care too much about that. But what we're looking at is, we have Main Street and the site drive here. And I want to make everybody aware that we understand that the Walmart did have an approval from OSTA, and we are in receipt. We have seen the improvements that they proposed on Main Street. And we are in agreement that those are necessary. So this analysis incorporates those improvements. And what we're looking at is you can see that at the site drive in the AM peak, it's a level of service B. And after we built, constructed the inner circle, is a level of service A. So we do improve with the improvements to Route 25. We do improve the level of service out there. You can see the intersection up to the north operated at B, and that's going to stay at B. We're not anticipating a lot of traffic going up that way. And then down in Trumbull, we have level of service at Spring Hill Road and Tashwall Road. I'm including those just because I'm proposing improvements out in that area, too, if I can show exactly. Our midway, midday condition, we have the same scenario. It's a level of service A at the site driveway, but it does degrade to a B in the peak, in the, after it turns service. Up to the north, it's a level of service E, and it stays a level of service C. PM peak, as you can tell, I'm sure everybody in the neighborhood knows, that the intersection to the north operates at a level of service E. It stays keeping our build condition. We're not sending traffic that late, not a lot of it. And then you can see in the mid, PM peak for our site drive, the level is E, but with the improvements, it improves to a level of service D. What we're looking at is, we understand that, you know, the Walmart had improvements, and we've seen those improvements, and we're in agreement that they should be appropriated. So we're going to work with the Ontario Traffic Administration on that widening of Route 25. We'll work with OSTA to get a new traffic signal installed at Victoria Drive, because that, that's part of the agreement there. And we would work to add an 11-foot wide shared through right turn lane coming northbound on 25, the intersection. And that actually reduces the queue length, which is the amount of cars stored there, from 830 feet down to 210 feet. So it's a vast improvement on 25 heading north. And also, what we want to do and what we've proposed is some improvements out at Spring Hill Road and Tashwall. That's what they're on there. We want to offer some re-timings out there for OSTA to consider, where we improve the level of service out there from a B to a C, and the level of service either a D. So we're hoping that they'll consider those improvements as well. And I'll open it up to questions or turn it back over to Schmitty.
Thanks, Mike. For the record, Mr. Chairman, it's done now. My guess is that the commission probably has some questions for, you know, the four of us presenters. We'd be happy to entertain those now or proceed in whatever manner you deem most appropriate.
We can go to the commissioners now for questions. We'll start with Commissioner Mayene.
I thought, I think that's a wonderful presentation, guys. Thank you so much for bringing that before, before us. What are your, what are the planned hours of operation?
Sure. So generally, as Mike had indicated, drivers will show up at the facility in the morning in their own personal vehicle. They'll drive their assigned van, you know, off the lot and try, with the focus being that, once they're fully loaded, they'll get out onto the roadway system after the rush hour. So generally, get on the road around 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock in the morning, make their deliveries over an eight-to-12-hour period, come back to the facility, generally, early evening, you know, 8:00 o'clock or so, just very generally, then get back into their own personal vehicles and then drive off. So the whole idea being, it makes no sense to have vans full of packages sitting in traffic in the morning commute or the evening commute, and so they avoid those, those two times. And so obviously, the people arriving at the facility in their personal vehicles would be arriving just before that, and then obviously going home just after.
Okay, so what time do they start in the morning?
I think generally, they would, you know, certainly, they would be staggered, but they'd be showing up somewhat meter fashion.
I'm not asking for an exact time. You could be, you could ballpark it.
Right, 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock in the morning, they, they would start showing up because obviously they need to load up, and there's only, you know, so much space for that loading to occur. So it'd all be staggered throughout the course of the morning.
All right, so you're roughly talking like 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM is roughly what you're talking about, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and it's, the office building on site would probably start that early, but the delivery drivers, they typically won't get on site till 9:00 o'clock.
Okay.
It's about 9:00 until 10:00, 9:00 AM till 10:00 PM.
Okay. So you, okay, so you don't have like a, so that, there's nobody there 24 hours? There's nothing going on there after those hours or before those hours, correct?
Correct.
The lighting, I'm assuming, is all dark sky compliant?
It is, yes.
You know what? I'm good for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to acknowledge Rob Westland has joined the meeting. Commissioner Westland joined at 7:40. Going to go to Commissioner Condon for questions.
So I do see that you guys are incorporating the portion of the Walmart screening that was requested. Any chance you'd add more screening, particularly kind of near where those property lines are with the residential housing, or is that out of the question?
Yeah, I mean, maybe if Schmitty can pull up that plan, you know, you know, one of the reasons why we want to maintain that 100-foot buffer is there's a, there is substantial existing, you know, mature vegetation in those areas. I mean, we certainly would be open to enhancing it, but you know, what's sort of interesting is how this site sits, which is generally certainly below Route 25, but also below all the residential properties as well. You know, if Schmitty could be allowed to share his screen, perhaps we could, you know, look at that specific area that you're referencing.
Let's see. I just have to be allowed to share.
Or maybe it should be Wayne sharing his screen, Schmitty, because he's got the landscape plan.
That's fine.
Thank you. I will share my screen. This is Wayne Violet, BL Companies. Okay.
Commissioner Condon, if you could just reference the location that you're pointing to.
So the north side, you have, you have the existing evergreen buffer. Would there be any thought, or any way of expanding that even a little more? Just for the neighbors that are on one of the roads.
That's Pheasant Lane up there.
Yeah, Pheasant Lane, and then you have the, where you're already putting the other extended pine trees. I like that that's being extended, expanded for that, for those neighbors. But if there's anything else up there that you might be able to put in.
Were you thinking of expanding it sort of east and west, or just making it denser north to south?
Denser. I mean, the real, you know, obviously, the concern I'm sure that neighbors will have is whether or not they'll be able to see this from their properties, particularly in the fall. But you are doing evergreens, so I'm sure that's going to help. It's just, you know, is there room, room to expand it any further?
I would defer to Wayne to, you know, I see, we want to make sure that whatever plantings are there are going to be healthy and survive and thrive, so I would allow Wayne to respond more substantively.
Thank you. Wayne Violet, BL Companies. Yeah, so if the area that we're talking about here roughly is, if everyone can see my mouth circling around an area, if the zone is kind of starting from here and working our way kind of along this north or northern property line, let's say. Yeah, what we're showing in this light green is basically our limit of disturbance or limit of grading that's needed to construct this facility. And we can, we can apply additional plantings along this north facade, north property line or north edge of disturbance. We can include a mix of deciduous and evergreen species. I will just inform everyone, I think it's important, where we show on this particular graphic in white, or what's not rendered, primarily is existing vegetation. So we've highlighted here a couple areas where it's evergreen in specific. Um, but that area identify or shown on this graphic in white uh, is primarily vegetation between canopy and coverage. But yeah, along that uh, limited disturbance line, along of our basic development, uh, we could add some supplemental uh, screening between deciduous and evergreen uh, that'll help filter and screen. Uh, but there is a substantial buffer there. I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Okay, yeah, good thought. Yeah, oh, go ahead.
No, I'm, I was wondering whether Wayne can pull up the uh, the aerial photograph so we can see the existing vegetation as well.
Yeah.
Very helpful.
Yeah, what I think you might be seeing on the screen, uh, this is a fairly recent aerial. If your eyes are pretty sharp, you might be able to pick up on this. So this would be kind of a fall or winter uh, winter time uh, scene of this particular site. What you see in this zone is what we've highlighted is that existing evergreen buffer, which will remain. It's outside of the limited disturbance. Uh, so that's good. Uh, but everywhere kind of that's not this light color. That light color really represents clear area, disturbed area. Um, but all these areas that are kind of in this brownish color, that does represent a deciduous stand or existing vegetation. Uh, could be primarily oats, maples of the, you know, that kind of species. So there is a, you know, pretty healthy, pretty extensive buffer there. Uh, what we could add to that north, you know, northern development line uh, could supplement it, but just want to reassure everyone, there's an existing buffer uh, that's that's pretty solid uh, in that particular zone.
Okay, um, and and Wayne, I just want to make clear that, you know, we would want to put those in any additional vegetation in the area that's not in an upwind review area because, you know, we have our existing development approvals. And so to the extent that we um, you know, want to add additional landscaping, it would have to be in a place that's not in the upwind review area.
And this is John Schmitz. Yeah, I also just wanted to note quickly that um, when you look at the plan along the parking area in the north in particular, um, the plan does show the 100-foot setback. The parking along the north is roughly about 150 feet in total from the property line.
All right, and then my next question, just uh, the building is uh, what is the roof material uh, going to be? And that's basically it. And what color? Because it is downgrade, right? So reflection, uh, just want to make sure it's nothing aluminum shiny, anything like that.
Uh, this is John Schmitz again, BL. The uh, the building, and I don't have a graphic of it. There were plans that were submitted with the packages. Uh, the building is a um, single-story um, building with a pitched roof, pitched in four directions. Um, so it's pitched uh, basically four um, four angled roofs. It would be asphalt shingles, so dark shingles. Obviously, there's different shades and colors. Um, that was done purposely to try to mimic uh, the front entrance portion of the soccer facility uh, across the street, try to have some kind of continuity in architectural style. And so that's uh, that's how we developed that that plan.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
All right, then let's go to Commissioner Ambrosi.
Yeah, I guess the weight limit of the vehicles, does anybody know what they are?
Yeah, I'm, uh, we talked about that last time and and generally they are uh, gross vehicle weight of 9,050 pounds. So typical Sprinter vans, I mean, to the extent that there's a concern about larger box trucks, that those will not be utilizing this site. Um, so it's, you know, the typical vans you see um, outside people's homes, you know, that uh, other national carriers would be um, uh, driving the local streets.
So you wouldn't have a problem with us putting like a 10,000 uh, gross vehicle weight per parking.
Uh, I would want to make sure we, I know exactly what a 10,000 gross vehicle weight is. I mean, but um, I know that we need to keep the hearing open because of the uh, the drainage concerns uh, and and getting Scott Schoss's uh, responses to our reply. So um, you know, we can, we can give you a more definitive number when we come back to you in a couple of weeks. Uh, but I I don't want to pick a, you know, sort of a random or arbitrary number of 10,000 gross vehicle pounds uh, you know, without knowing precisely, you know, what what the truck limits are exactly.
Yeah, because I think this commission wants to put some, I I believe I do, wants to put some kind of weight limit on it because it, the approval goes with the site. And for some reason, if you use the site and sell it, then you can put larger vehicles on there. So, and I know that's not what we're planning on doing, but I just think that put some kind of limit on it.
Okay, I'm, uh, we can give you some some more precise numbers.
Okay, and um, the uh, the containment system that you have for for your runoff and stuff like that, you know, um, if there's an oil spill or fuel spill, will that system contain that?
Yeah, so this is John Schmitz with BL again. Uh, there's, there's kind of a treatment train approach to that, and the answer is yes. Um, because all the catch basins are hooded, um, it's actually a literally a hood that covers the outlet pipe. So there's some capacity in every single catch basin. So if if uh, a vehicle was leaking or there was a, there was oil uh, spilled or a hose went, brake line or whatever it was, uh, some of that fluid would get trapped in the catch, would not travel beyond the catch basin because of the hood. Um, any any uh, fluids, things like that, that somehow get past the catch basins uh, would get trapped in one of the four hydrodynamic separators, uh, which is basically a twirl concentrator. And they not only capture um, solids and sediment, but also separate out the oils. Um, there's a L for that uh, for that system um, in the detail sheets. And um, and depending on the size, they handle various gallons, um, various uh, gallon capacities, how many, um, how much oil they can store. And again, like I indicated, uh, to operate properly, they need to be maintained. And what will happen is on a yearly basis, semi-annual basis, um, the uh, maintenance company will come and look at them and and pump them out so that um, you know, and also take a measurement to determine how much uh, fluid is there. Of course, if there is any kind of spill, you wouldn't wait around to clean it up six months later. It would get treated, you know, as soon as it's reported.
No, I'm just wondering, what's the capacity that they can hold? If say if a a fuel tank was leaking or something that leaked 40 gallons of fuel, would they be able to hold that without going into the, you know, because it's close to the the river and stuff like that? And so I want to know the total volume it could hold before you end up having a problem.
Sure, yeah, I can get those numbers for you. I I know they're uh, they're in the report, but I'll uh, again, since the hearings will be open, I can get those uh, actual volumes for you.
Okay, and then um, are you guys, I knew that there was wetland violations on that property. You guys, you guys going to address all those that were on that property?
Uh, we we actually met extensively with your staff, including Denise Halsted. And uh, that's one of the reasons why we're doing the um, restoration area, the restoration work that uh, Josh Smith had pointed to earlier. And so um, yes, so we're making corrections all that and we're complying with the original wetland permits uh, to the letter. So not only, not only the original weather approval, but also uh, an expanded weather approval that we received from Denise after getting the authorization from the Weatherly Commission in January.
Okay, and I think um, Bruno Manini was was like getting into like a time schedule of when you're going to be open and when you're going to close that facility. Are you, you want this to be 24 hours? Or would you like it to be from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM or?
No, no, I, it was, it's it's um, the same that that we had discussed earlier with Mike DeNey. Generally uh, uh, drivers will be arriving in the morning, 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock in the morning, leaving uh, and you know, in the van and then arriving or returning later on that night, you know, 8:00 or 10 o'clock, 8:00 to 10 o'clock in the evening. Um, so those are the hours. I mean, certainly no intent for it to be 24 hours because, you know, as a practical matter, no one really wants to get into delivery at midnight or 2:00 in the morning.
No, I understand that, but I was wondering if if you would have a problem with us putting a time schedule on that to like 10:00 PM or from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM and?
Well, I, I mean, I mean, while that would be, you know, I I would be concerned about limiting hours. I mean, to say that, you know, there's going to be a gate that will go off at 10 o'clock at night and no van could ever get in or out, I mean, particularly during the holiday hours. I mean, I think we'd want, you know, at least a degree of flexibility, but I think we have the assurance that um, the vast majority of the traffic in and out is going to be taking place during, you know, normal hours, you know, from, you know, 8:00 or 9:00 in the morning until 8:00 or 10 o'clock at night. But certainly when Walmart was there or frankly, any other use, that could have been 24 hours as well. I think the minute, the impact um, to anyone is going to be extremely minimal. Um, so I I guess there isn't, there won't, there shouldn't be a concern about, you know, to the extent that there is uh, any traffic there, you know, operating through the night, just because, you know, it's just going to be a vehicle or two, you know, coming and going or perhaps, you know, repositioning themselves in the, in the parking lots.
Okay, and the last question I have to ask you is, um, I know that the, that your vans aren't going to be registered, a lot of them aren't registered in Connecticut, I would imagine. That's what you said last time, right?
Uh, that's correct.
And so how are we going to be assured that we're going to receive the taxes on these vehicles?
Uh, good question, and that's another thing that we've been talking to your staff considerably over the past several months, and we've had several conversations with your tax assessor. You know, under state law, we are required to file a declaration for any vehicle that uh, is on the site for three months or more, and uh, we have pledged to your, to your tax assessor that we ensure that that takes place. So um, I think your your assessor is comfortable with our responses and uh, would hope that this commission is as well.
So you're gonna, so you'll you'll update that information every three months with your assessor? Or will it be on a yearly basis?
No, so so obviously, you know, the uh, uh, the date is going to be October 1st. But yeah, we will, we will keep track of uh, vans in such a way that we can ensure that the town receives all the tax revenue that is that is uh, owed to it.
Right, so I I think that we, I think the commission is going to require something in writing that guarantees that that's being done.
No, no, and and uh, we understand the concern. I mean, certainly, we want, you know, if there is a state law and we want to comply with that state law, if there is a condition of approval on our special exception that says something to the effect that we we have to comply with all state laws, including the filing of declarations or, you know, filing of of all relevant tax documents, we'd be happy to uh, you know, accommodate that condition. Um, so you know, so we will comply and we will continue to work with your, with your uh, town staff, particularly your tax assessor, to ensure that we're paying whatever's uh, properly due.
Okay. All right, Mike, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ambrosi. Bring up four excellent points. Next, we'll go to Commissioner Westland.
Hello, yeah, and I apologize, I missed the first portion of what seemed to be a comprehensive uh, presentation. So uh, my questions may come with a certain level of redundancy. Um, I'm also a fan of of additional screening um, on this particular application. And um, just to reiterate possibly, was there going to be any fleet fueling or service on site at all?
No, um, and and that's an important consideration for two reasons. No fueling, no maintenance of any kind, so there's no concern about, you know, large spills from any um, you know, onsite fueling. And then what we've also have been indicating uh, tonight as well as several weeks ago is that because of all the maintenance and fueling is going to uh, take place off-site, um, the local businesses such as gas stations, tire stores, you know, all those folks, as well as delis, coffee shops, will all benefit from this facility.
Perfect. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Yeah. Um, Commissioner Lupo.
Thank you. Um, I agree with all the other commissioners that I think the plan is a good one. Uh, the property has been vacant for some time, um, and it does fall in line with our goals for our POCD. Um, I do have a few follow-up questions. Um, I'm going to tail on the end of Commissioner, Commissioner Ambrosi. Uh, I also would want something in writing regarding the the taxes we would get. Um, and then something you said was that it would only be if the trucks were on-site after three months. Is that correct?
Right, so what the state, what the state statute says is that any vehicle that is located, essentially spends the night at a particular address for three months or more, a declaration must be filed with the town tax assessor. So, I mean, typically you would see that, you know, frankly, some people try to avoid paying their uh, car tax on a, on a vehicle and maybe take the plates off or maybe, you know, hide in someplace, um, even though they should be paying uh, uh, personal property tax on those vehicles. So so yes, declarations will be filed in accordance with the state statute to ensure that the town receives all the tax income that's that's owed to it.
Okay, so as as those vans, I don't know how often they're replaced, but as they're replaced, new declarations will go into place for when the new ones replace the old ones, correct?
Yes, so I mean, typically, what's happened in other towns is is they um, a count will be, will be made by the tax assessor and um, an estimate is created and then sent to the operations people. So um, there's a variety of mechanisms, but you know, we certainly want to make sure that um, the town Monroe receiving is receiving the tax income that's that is owed to it.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then my other question uh, follows Commissioner Mayene. Um, I understand the hours. Now, in the narrative, it said that there would be no loading and unloading, but then as part of his answer to the question, somebody said there would be loading of the vehicles.
I'm sorry for any confusion, but no load would take place at this facility. It would be merely a facility for parking and they would have to go someplace else to load.
Okay, so overnight, will there be any merchandise left on the vehicles that are there?
Um, I don't think so, no. I, it wouldn't really make much sense, uh, because you want to get those packages out to people.
Okay, I'm just thinking overnight security, if there's vans down there full of merchandise, um, what kind of security you might need for that?
It would be possible that we could have a security guard because there's lots of vehicles there. But no, then, but no packages will be stored on the vans overnight.
Okay, um, and the gatehouse security, is that going to be manned, follow to that question? Will that be manned for 24 hours? Do we know, or is that just going to be during hours of operation?
Uh, I would suspect there's probably 24-hour security, um, but I can, I can confirm that.
Okay, and I know my other question, I know Ryan had asked about a spec of the building. I know we don't have, I wanted to see what it would look like from the street, but I know we don't have that.
We actually did submit elevations, but the fact of the matter is, it's going to be impossible, nearly impossible to see this building from the street. I mean, it's out rather small, but because of the um, uh, the change in grade, which is fairly substantial from uh, Route 25 down to the bottom of 10 Victoria, um, it will be nearly impossible to see this. It's only a one-story building and obviously there's going to be a substantial amount of landscaping, you know, over the distance between Route 25 and the building.
Understood. And I may have missed, uh, my last question is on the outdoor. Where are, are there any dumpsters on site? Where are those located?
Uh, I'm not sure of any. Is Schmitty another?
Yeah, actually, again, John Schmitz with BL. Uh, there's one dumpster. It's located on the east side adjacent to the um, proposed building. So the west side of the building is the pond and the east side of the building would be a single dumpster uh, there, would be enclosed in a uh, you know, in an enclosure.
Okay, thank you. Those are my only questions.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Schmitz, I have a question. Do you have stormwater detention retention pods that you have? Um, when they, will they fill up?
They will, they're, yeah, they're designed to um, to fill during 100, they're designed to hold, contain 100-year event. Um, so during 100-year storm, they would fill, it would fill up more or less. Uh, there is a, it's called a freeboard, so they don't fill up to the very top. There's a, the freeboard means that um, we have a um, basically a factor of 60. And uh, so there's like an emergency spillway. Um, if you've got a 500-year storm, um, again, the the water would um, go over the emergency spillway. But for the most part, um, even 100-year storm, which is incredibly rare, uh, would be contained within the basins and within the underground system itself.
So the spillway um, drains into the Paquonic River, I would imagine?
Yes, ultimately, everything gets into the Paquonic. Um, but again, we're a couple of hundred feet away from the Paquonic, so water would go over an emergency spillway, would run through vegetation over existing ground, and then it would get to the Paquonic.
So there are no pipes from the, any of the detention retention pods to the Paquonic?
Not, not directly. The only piping, so the um, The only piping, so the, um, northerly pond, as well as the underground detention system, are tying into a, um, the existing drainage system that's in Victoria Drive. Uh, when Victoria Drive was constructed, the piping system by our driveway, uh, anticipated development of this site, there's 30-inch pipes in the ground there, um, 30-inch RCPs, and those discharge, um, just on the downhill side, um, adjacent to the bridge, so not directly into the river. And will be tying into the pipes in the street, which ultimately discharge, um, just upstream of the Paquonik, which is, again, that, that outlet is just, um, downstream with the bridge. There's another outlet, as I noted, there's another pond at the southwest corner of our development that discharges into an existing, uh, system in Victoria Drive. But actually, I'm not sure if it's called Victoria Drive at that point, it's more like the driveway for Victor, uh, Victoronics. And then, um, there's a, there's another, um, small pond on the west side of the drive, and that eventually discharges also just upstream into a, uh, system just upstream of the Paquonik. I hope I answered your question.
So, but you don't anticipate regular discharges then?
So, because of the water quality improvements, the, the, the one-inch storm, um, the one-inch storms are completely, uh, contained on-site. So, um, what we typically see, the one-inch storm, uh, you know, the first flush, um, nine, something like 90% of all storms are less than one inch of rainfall. Um, that runoff is collected on-site and recharged into the ground. So in those type storms, there would be no discharge whatsoever from the site, and it's only until you get up into larger, you know, five, 10, 25-year storm events where there would be discharges at all.
So on a 25- or 50-year storm event, there would be discharges into the Paquonik?
That's correct. Water would leave the site and eventually make its way to the Paquonik.
Okay.
And, and based on the regulations, we are, um, matching, slightly reducing actually, the, the peak flows, meaning that water today from the site runs to the Paquonik, and we're not going to exceed the amount of water, the, 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 um, rate of release won't be exceeded beyond what's happening today.
Right, it'll likely be decreased actually then, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, that, that's all the questions I have. I would like to go to, uh, the staff. Um, Rick Schultz, do you have, um, I know we're going to be held up from closing because of some comments from, uh, the town engineer, Scott Schatzlein. Do you have any comments that have to be addressed?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to hold off, uh, to our next meeting, and as you indicated, we need to continue this.
All right. Then I think all the commissioners have had time to speak. I'm going to open it up to the public at this point. Um, if there are any members of the public that would like to comment on this application, um, please let yourselves be known at this point.
Yes, uh, I have a couple of questions. Uh, my name is Mike Trumbach. I'm at 43 Partridge Drive, and I am border this property just to the north. And my questions basically have to deal with, um, the number of vans that we're looking at here. So my first question is, how many delivery vans do you expect to have on this property, stored on this property?
Um, Mr. Chairman, is, is John Neufa, I'm happy to respond iteratively as Mr. Trumbach makes his, uh, asks his questions, unless you want him to ask all of them, then we can, then we can respond, you know, in, in total to all of them.
My only entry. Go ahead and respond.
I'm sorry?
You can go ahead and respond.
Sure. So, so, um, Mr. Trumbach, I, we had indicated at the last meeting that initially there would be several hundred vans, they're probably ramping up to, uh, 400 or so, um, you know, give or take. I mean, obviously, uh, depends on the success of the facility, depends upon the time of year. Obviously, during the holidays, there may be, uh, some more, but, you know, as, as we indicated at the last hearing, this is a large parking lot, the same way you would find, you would have found a large parking lot for, uh, Walmart, it's just that there's no building there. Um, and frankly, considerably less, uh, activity taking place on the site because it is, um, purely for parking and, and people getting into and out of their cars and vans, and no other activity would be taking place.
Okay. What's the total number of vehicles that would ultimately be envisioned, uh, that would be needed to service the distribution center down the road?
Um, again, it, it's hard to say, it's, it's going to be dependent partly on, on market demand. We anticipate around 400 or so, um, but again, that can fluctuate depending upon demand.
And, uh, how, how many parking spaces are going to be constructed there?
We're proposing, I think, 668 van spaces and 43 personal vehicle spaces, which allows, you know, for some flexibility in number of vans, but also allows for, you know, people to come and park and, um, get in a van and, and obviously, so that, you know, every space isn't, isn't filled at all times.
Yeah, I know, understood, understood. Because I looked at the site development plan, and it looks like there's over 800 spaces on the site development plan.
I'm, I'm pretty sure it's 668 plus 43, but maybe Schmitty can correct me if I'm wrong?
No, you, you've got the right numbers. Um, I, I would only add that a couple of those spaces are reserved for, um, ADA, uh, handicap accessibility, which is required by law, but the numbers you gave are accurate.
Okay. Uh, like I said, my, my questions were basically around, around the number of vehicles and so forth. I did notice the last few days that the light out at Victoria Drive and 25 is fully operational and going through the usual cycles now regardless of traffic leaving the property. And I made three trips down 25 over the last three days, I caught that light coming and going all three times, with nobody coming out, and a large fuel truck decided that he wouldn't stop for the red light because nobody was coming out, so hopefully there'll be no accident.
Gosh, and, and, uh, as our traffic engineer, Mike Deion, indicated, that that signal will actually be upgraded and replaced.
Yeah, well, up until recently, it just, it only triggered when somebody was leaving the property. Now it's, it's, it's just cycling regardless of whether anybody's exiting the property, so.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, Mike Deion.
And I don't know how, I don't know how I caught, I don't know how I caught the red light going both ways three times over three days.
Yeah, Mike Deion with B L Company, that, that indicates that the loop detector on the driveway has probably failed, they're only good for usually five years, and when that happens, it's going to call, it goes into what they call recall mode, and it'll call that side street, there's no traffic on it, so that's what's happened out there.
Okay. Those, those are the only questions I had, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbach.
Are there any other members of the public here tonight that would like to comment? Uh, please identify yourself, name and address.
I'm here. My name is John Raypolt, and I'm a resident of 17 Pheasant Lane, which is a northern neighbor, and I've been here since the property was first mined and proposed for office buildings and Walmart and a glass-crushing operation, and I'm really pleased with this proposal. Um, I'm in favor of it, they've, they've covered all the points, they, looks like they're trying to be a good neighbor, and I just wanted to raise the concern that a couple of the commissioners have regarding the northern, uh, so-called established evergreen buffer, and those, those trees were planted 20 years ago, and so they've grown up to be very tall and bushy at the top, but the lower levels of those pines are pretty much dead, gone. So, looking out my property, I can see through the bottom of those trees. So, I, again, I would like to suggest that maybe some plantings that are covering the lower section of the property go into place just to hide that lower view. Um, but other than that, thank you for your presentation, and as a northern neighbor, I look forward to, uh, the plan coming through and, uh, your, your good use of the property. So thank you.
Uh, thank you. We're happy to take a look at the last hearing.
Thank you.
Um, are there any other members of the public tonight that would like to comment on this application? Um, once again, are there any other members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application? If not, any of the commissioners have anything else they would like to comment on? All right, if not, then we'll give it back to you, Mr. Neufa.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate, uh, your attention and the comments from the public. Uh, there's a few outstanding things that we'll get back to you with in two weeks on March 18th, as well as, uh, hopefully we can resolve any questions that Scott has. Um, but again, we thank you for your attention and look forward to being back reporting in a couple of weeks.
All right, then we will, uh, keep this hearing open. Thank you.
Terrific. Have a good evening.
We're going to move ahead to item number six on the agenda tonight. That is S U B 2021 dash oh one, file number 1266C, 515 and 529 Cutler's Farm Road. Um, this is a re-subdivision application that, um, was opened at our last regular meeting and will be continued tonight. This is United Methodist Church, and, um, who do we have tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is Dave Bjorklund, uh, with Spat Bjorklund Associates. Uh, at the last meeting, uh, we, it was decided that, uh, I would meet with staff to discuss some of, uh, Scott Schatzlein's comments, uh, with regards to improvements along Cutler's Farm Road, uh, and, uh, his request for the extension of the water line. Uh, we did, uh, meet with, uh, by conference call, uh, there was a meeting held, uh, with regards to the water line, uh, with, uh, Bill Daven, the town's fire marshal, and, uh, and Rick Schultz and myself had a meeting, uh, last Friday, uh, to discuss the water line. Uh, and I went, went through, uh, the sit, the situation, uh, with Mr. Daven, uh, indicating to him that there was a water line in front of the property, uh, in, in front of the lot number three, right at the church's driveway. Uh, and, uh, that water line was extended to that point, uh, in, in order to serve the church. Uh, and this was done, nobody has a positive date, but, uh, one of the trustees, uh, of the church, uh, indicated that he thought that the water main was extended about 25 years ago. And, uh, at that point in time, both the church and the parsonage, the parsonage is the home, the house, existing house that is shown on lot two, were served by a well, they shared a well between the church, uh, and the parsonage, and the, the water pressure was just horrible. So when the water, uh, was extended and the church was connected, they just simply, uh, continued that, uh, feature, and they just replaced, uh, the well with a water line that runs, uh, across to lot three. So lot for, or lot two in essence has public water. Uh, we then discussed, uh, you know, extension of the water main, uh, to get down to lot one, and I had indicated to, to Mr. Daven, two things that I thought were important. One is that to get the water line down to, uh, lot one would probably be in the range of, uh, $200,000 to $250,000, uh, based upon current costs for water mains, and I indicated to him, the other thing that I looked at with regards to the extension of the water main was that as you go further west on Cutler's Farm Road out to Pepper Street, and then taking either a left or a right on Pepper Street, there aren't any really large pieces of real estate there, uh, that could be developed at some point in the future where public water would be essential and important to public safety. Uh, there are some large parcels of land, uh, along Pepper Street, uh, and there's, I think everybody's familiar with the, uh, with the rail-to-trails, uh, property, uh, that is, and the parking lot that down is, is at the end of Cutler's Farm Road. But the, the, all these large pieces of property that, that, you know, there, there's hundreds of acres there, they're all either designated as open space, or they're owned by Aquarian Water Company and their primary Class 1 watershed, uh, to the, uh, you know, to the, the reservoir. So, uh, you know, I, I said, you know, looking at the extension of the water line that way, that didn't really make sense either. Uh, then Bill asked about the possibility of just extending the water main, uh, to get a hydrant down in front of lot two, and, uh, again, I indicated that just, that's about a 670-foot extension. And, uh, you know, again, that, just that extension, it's not just that extension, 670 feet of water line is a lot of water line. And, you know, I estimate that cost could be in the range of 100,000 to 150,000. And, you know, the, these numbers exceed, uh, the value of the lot. You know, we do have to some, do some road improvements in Cutler's Farm Road, uh, to provide for site line, uh, but, you know, any way that we look at extending the water line, uh, you know, we're looking at something that exceeds the value of the real estate that we're creating. So, I'd like, if the commission has any, any comments or questions with regards to that, you know, I'd be, I'd be glad to answer them and/or discuss them, uh, but where I was going to propose with the commission tonight, the way I perceive between now and the next meeting is to, uh, you know, request the waiver, which the fire marshal has to, uh, you know, has to agree to, uh, and that we do not do any extension of the water line, uh, to serve this subdivision for the reasons that I just stated. Uh, and the, the same would apply to the road improvements along the entire frontage of the property. Again, we are improving the frontage for the site line for lot one, but any other improvements beyond that, uh, because of the grades on the south and southwest side of Cutler's Farm Road, they, they exceed the value of the property, and I think Cutler's Farm Road, although it's a busy road, it's still, uh, you know, it, it's still rather rural in nature. So, that's, that's how I'm proposing to proceed, but I, I'd like to have a discussion with the commission, uh, about any concerns, uh, or questions that the commission has.
All right, then we'll, um, call the commission, starting, uh, this time with, um, Nicole Lupo. I think I saw her here.
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you, Mike. Um, I actually don't have any further questions, I'd asked them last week, and, um, Dave, you answered some of them tonight with the water line question, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Westland?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Ambrosi?
Yeah, Dave, um, how'd you, how'd you make out with the easement to go into open space?
Rick Schultz and I discussed that that won't be a problem. We're proposing, we'll provide a, a 10-foot easement between lot one and two, uh, along that common property line, that will be a pedestrian easement that will go back to the open space.
All right, and so where did you leave it off with the fire marshal?
That we were going to discuss it with the commission. I mean, we, we didn't really, I mean, you know, I'm, Bill's, Bill's concerned, you know, when he was starting the meeting, what he was, you know, which, he's a fire marshal, his, his concern is to extend the water main, well, as we, you know, discussed it and looked at the distances and the cost. Uh, the way we left the meeting was, I said, I was going to discuss it with one of the trustees from the church to get the history on how the parsonage was served, uh, and then we would get back to the commission. So what'll happen now is, I'll discuss with Bill tomorrow or Monday what happened this evening, uh, and then, as I said, there's a former waiver, uh, requirement that I will file with, uh, with this commission and, and with, uh, and with the fire marshal.
All right, and Rick, did we get anything from the fire marshal or no?
No, he was waiting to hear if there are any additional comments from the commission, so I think at this point, we're going to have our meeting tomorrow and take it to the next level.
All right, so we'll get a response from the fire marshal then?
Yes.
Okay, Dave, that's all I have. Okay, Dave, that's all I have right now.
Thank you.
Commissioner Condon?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Mayini?
Uh, no, no questions, Mike. Thank you.
All right, and, uh, so Dave, you're willing to, uh, improve the sightlines, obviously. And, um, I guess-
There's no question. That's, that's a public safety, uh, you know, that's required under the regulations.
All right, and then I guess we should leave it up to the fire commissioner, um, as far as his waiver. With that said, are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this, um, application? Since this is still a public hearing, any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application? If not, then I believe we'll need to leave it open. Right, Rick?
Yeah, March 18th.
Until we hear from the fire commissioner.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. B. Orkland. Move on to, uh, number seven on the agenda. This is a new, uh, item. RAA 2021-01, file number 1016E. This is for a mixed-use design district and a special development district. This is a text amendment. Ryan, do you have the notices?
I do. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held March 4th, 2021, accordance with CGS 8-7D. A public hearing will be held on Thursday, March 4th, 2021, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via go-to meeting concerning the following. RAA 2021-02, file number 1016E, mixed-use design district and special development district. Regulation text amendment petition application to existing 1.8.1, 5.2, and 5.3 to create a Route 25 mixed-use design district overlay and a special development district, solely engineering applicant. Published in voices Wednesday, uh, February 17th and 24th. Complete details and copies of all related materials associated with the above matters are on file and available for viewing in Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices by appointment and on the town's website.
Rick, do you have the exhibits?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Exhibit number one, regulation amendment petition application. Number two, uh, regional plan agency referral notice. Number three, adjacent municipality referral notice. Four, agency referral notice. Five, Nogatuck Valley Council of Governments referral response, no impact. Number six, West Connecticut Council of Government referral response, no impact. And seven, town planners comment. That is it.
Okay. Then I am, believe we have Mr. Solly with us tonight?
Yes, uh, good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Solly. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solly Engineering Offices located, uh, at 501 Main Street, right here in Monroe. Um, uh, I have a number of, uh, members in my team here with me tonight. Um, with me here this evening is, uh, Greg Kamidolsky, who's working on behalf of an interested property owner, uh, Joe Williams, an attorney with Shipman and Goodwin, Howard Rapidport, who is a developer with, uh, Continental Properties, who does a lot of, uh, large, high-end luxury multifamily apartment projects, and also Stan Giednawski, who is our, um, uh, market analyst, uh, expert, um, who's gonna talk a little bit about the, uh, some of the, um, positive economic impacts of what we're proposing. Um, I'm not sure if someone could make me a presenter, and I could share my screen and run through a quick presentation on what we're proposing? Awesome. Thank you. So, um, uh, what we're here tonight to discuss is a proposed regulation amendment to the Monroe Planning and Zoning Regulations. And we're proposing to create a, uh, mixed-use design district along Route 25. So, so first, I'm gonna run through, um, the concept that we're creating, how some other surrounding communities use very similar planning tools and kind of talk about the concept. I'm then gonna pass it on to Stan, who's going to touch base on a little bit of the positive economic benefits that some, that a project that a approval like this could, could result for the town. And then I'm gonna run through some of the specifics of our regulation amendment, and then I'm gonna leave it off to, uh, Howard, who's gonna talk about, uh, his experience with some of these projects and why we think this could be a very, uh, positive addition, positive amendment to the regs and could really result in some great positive economic opportunities in, in the town of Monroe. So, um, just to start off, here's an aerial of the town of Monroe. And obviously, as the commission's well aware, the town of Monroe has zoning map and zoning regulations and what, from a, from a land use tool, zoning regs establish what's permitted in the zone and establishes bulk requirements on how, you know, uh, properties have to be developed and things like that. And, um, there are a number of different planning tools that can be used, um, kind of in addition to just your traditional conventional zoning. You know, right now Monroe has residential districts and business districts and industrial districts, and each district allows different types of uses. Um, and one of the things that's been identified in, uh, several last versions of the POCD and as part of the current draft of the POCD is the, is the concept of creating design districts or village districts. So, as we were working with some clients interested in, um, potentially pursuing some multifamily opportunities in town, we wanted to look at the best possible way to create some, uh, to create a planning tool that the commission could use that gives you, gives you the ultimate flexibility in reviewing applications and reviewing the planning exercise associated with, with these, this type of activity on a case-by-case basis. And what we did is we kind of looked at some of the surrounding communities, and one of the ones that we looked at was the town of Newtown. And the town of Newtown, like Monroe, has their zoning map. Um, but within their zoning regs, they have some additional planning tools with design districts. And they have something that's called the South Main Village Design District. They actually have several of these, um, but one is the South Main Village Design District. And that kind of focuses on, um, the port, the part, uh, portion of Route 25, um, north, you know, just north of the town line with Monroe. And you can see through the zone, there's actually all of the underlying zoning districts shown, but in some spots you see things like this that says, um, oh, that says SDD 1 or SDD 2. So what the concept is, is it creates a, uh, uh, South Main Village Design District in Newtown, which is established along the Route 25 corridor. Um, you can see, uh, on this GIS image, it actually shows the SMVDD, and it kind of establishes the geographic area of where this design district exists. And what happens is, is it creates, uh, an area of town where an applicant, um, could come before the commission with what's called a special design district, which basically has to fall within that larger design district. And that's when you see, um, back to their zoning map, how they have these SDD 1, SDD 2, SDD 3, because it's a planning tool that allows for, um, if you have a piece of property within that larger design district, you are now eligible for some potential additional uses. Or, um, or it gives an applicant the ability to come in before the commission, propose some, um, propose to create an SDD, and then that SDD can have some additional parameters that are, um, uh, maybe more, um, relaxed or, uh, have additional uses than what's allowed in the underlying zone. But it doesn't necessarily apply to every property because it has to be established with each individual application. So, so just because the property is established to be within this, um, proposed mixed-use design district, it doesn't mean that they're automatically granted the ability to, uh, develop their property in accordance with, uh, you know, what's, what's established in the framework. What it does is it gives them the ability to come, to bring an application before the commission to propose something within that overall design district. And what that does is that gives the commission the ability to look at each project on a case-by-case basis, understand the specific site constraints associated with that property or that project, and make an informed decision on whether or not what's being proposed is reasonable and is a positive economic, uh, opportunity for the town of Monroe, and to make sure that it's still inconsistent, it's still consistent with the overall plan of conservation and development and, you know, the overall general plan as, as the zoning regs create. So, um, what we've proposed is through working with staff, and we've actually had several discussions with, with staff, with this commission, with the regulation subcommittee meeting, about the best planning tool that the commission should consider when looking at mixed-use types of development. Um, and what we came up with was the mixed-use design district, which would essentially run up and down Route 25, um, north of the town line with Trumbull, uh, continuing north, um, to just south of the Stepney area, and then picking up again north of the Stepney area, and then continuing, uh, north along Route 25 to the town line with the town of Newtown. Now, the reason that we established this specific geographic area, rather than just the entire 25 corridor, is because in talking with staff, and obviously understanding the conversations with the POCD, we know there's an interest in town to create the, to create a Stepney Village District. Now, a village district, looking at something like the Stepney area, is something that needs, likely would require a little bit more thought, and, um, you'd wanna make it specific to this area, talk about walkability communities, things like that. So we didn't want to apply this to everywhere on 25, but really more define it in the area outside of this potential future Stepney Village District. So, that's why we came up with the area that we did. Um, so a corridor along Route 25, um, which would, you know, uh, essentially run north from the town line. It would stop around a future potential village district, and then it would pick up again and continue to the town line towards, towards, uh, Newtown. Um, so this is, um, this is the general concept of what we're proposing. And, and I wanted to, I'm gonna run through in a little bit the specific details associated with our, with our regulation amendment because we do look at it, at it a couple of different ways, because we think that projects have different sides, like we wanna have different, um, parameters and controls in place. So we put a lot of thought into creating a reg that, that did that, that was thoughtful to that. Um, and I'm gonna go through that in detail, but first I wanted to bring up, ask Stan Giednawski, who's part of our team, to kind of talk about some of his, um, uh, his findings. He's done some market research, um, to the town of Monroe, and I wanted him to talk a little bit about, um, kind of why this type of planning tool is, is a, is a good planning tool in some of the economic benefits that it may unlock in the town, that the town currently doesn't really get a lot of, get, get benefit of because they don't have, um, uh, you know, other than the mixed, uh, the, the reg that was just adopted to allow for some mixed-use development, there really isn't a larger area to, to apply some of these other planning tools. So, so with that, if Stan's here, if Stan could, I'm not sure, yeah, he is?
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Um, I did a lifestyle analysis of, uh, of Monroe. Lifestyle is having a profound, profound impact on the demand for residential, in particular, apartments. Uh, I found out that Monroe is basically comprised of four basic lifestyles with about, uh, 12.42% of the households that would potentially rent. And that, uh, calculated to about 834 potential renters within the town of Monroe out of the 6,700, uh, households that exist in Monroe at this point in time. Monroe has a 2020 estimated population of about 19,529. Currently, housing opportunities do not afford current Monroe residents the opportunity to stay in Monroe. There are no contemporary apartment communities in Monroe, Monroe that would allow residents to stay in Monroe when, uh, downsizing, reside near their employment, maintain their Monroe lifestyle. Monroe, uh, when, uh, Monroe, uh, when you look at the proposed mixed-use zone, uh, it creates opportunities that don't exist currently in Monroe. In particular, for elderly and empty nesters, it would allow them to stay in town if they wanna downsize and be near their families. It doesn't afford, uh, right now the opportunity, but the new zone would afford young individuals and newly formed households to, um, stay in town. It would also give the opportunity to maintain the Monroe lifestyle in being close to their physicians, their doctors, maintain their social life, places of worship, proximity to family and friends, maintain employment within the area. And the last one, which is becoming more important as time goes by, is the opportunity for in-place assisted living. Uh, what we're finding is that intergenerational projects are coming online for, um, assisted living, and this allows the husband and wife to, uh, stay together and say that the husband's able to work and the wife isn't, that they can stay within the apartment and get in-home services, uh, which is a trend that's happening because of the cost of, uh, of facility is much more expensive. Plus, it, it breaks up the families. The one spouse would have to be in a facility, the other one would have to live in a home or an apartment. Here, they could stay together, and that's an opportunity that, uh, doesn't exist right now because there's no apartments in Monroe. The mixed-use zone would provide retail and office use linkages that support apartments in the current Monroe lifestyle. When we say linkages, apartments, uh, thrive when there are services in the area in the retail and small office, uh, sector. And this, and that would be provided in the, this particular district. Uh, Monroe income levels are high. The median income, uh, is about $124,000 and an average of about $154,000, median net worth of about $648,000 and an average of about $2 million for a net worth, which is pretty high. Um, again, uh, people are concerned about birth rates, and birth rates are declining. Uh, the birth age is increasing, and, uh, the trend is for families to have, uh, children later in life, and they also purchase a home later in life. Higher income and, uh, rent levels tend to produce fewer public school-aged children. And primary research has indicated, uh, about eight students per hundred, uh, for new contemporary apartment buildings. One- and two-bedroom units produce fewer public school-aged children than three-bedroom or larger units in townhouses. And Monroe has, uh, experienced a decline in student enrollment from the 2014 to 2015 school year to 2018 to 2019 school year, which is the information from the State Department of Education, a decline of about 5.49%, or a decline of about 181 students. Besides real property taxes, uh, the apartments, uh, in mixed-use development would, uh, add personal property taxes, uh, will increase for the town. Each unit would produce, if there were apartments, about $3,500 to $4,500, uh, per unit of first, of, uh, real property or personal property taxes. The apartment market, uh, there is demand for apartments. In a recent study, uh, that was completed in the fourth quarter of 2020 of Fairfield County East. Now, when we look at Fairfield County, people just look at the county, but there's really two markets. There's the west, and there's the east side, and Monroe is in the east portion of, uh, Fairfield County. And the asking rents had increased in Fairfield East about one and a half percent to an average of about $1,700 per month, with an average one-bedroom unit of about $1,500 a month, and two bedrooms up to an average of $1,0950 per month. The average vacancy rate declined even during COVID. 2% to a vacancy rate currently for the last quarter of 2020 of 4.6%. Comparing that to the Fairfield West, that had the fourth fastest-growing, um, rent levels in the country, uh, with an average rent of $2,164 per month. One bedrooms were $1940 and two bedrooms $2,600, with one of the highest vacancies in the country. So the Fairfield West still maintained an 8.4% vacancy rate for the third quarter and for the fourth quarter of 2020. And the demand is more towards Fairfield East. Again, COVID-19 has increased the demand for apartments in Fairfield County, seeking less populated areas, and in particular Fairfield East towns like Monroe. So that is a, an overview of the demand, uh, for apartments in Fairfield East and in particular in Monroe. Any questions? Hey, thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Dan. So, so I wanted to kind of, um, let Stan kind of give a little bit of a, um, of an intro in terms of what the benefits of this, and I wanna talk a little bit about some of the specifics about our proposed application. So again, concept- concept, we create a, uh, mixed use design district, which falls on a geographic area. And then, um, uh, applicants would come before the commission to create a special development district which would fall within that. So our proposed, uh, regulation amendment, um, a- as you guys know, I don't generally like to, to present two slides with text on it, but I think it'll be helpful in this instance because it is a regulation amendment. So, um, the, the, the first thing that we'd be modifying with the regs is to create a section of the regs that talks about, you know, when, section of the regs that talks about the, the districts. We're creating a special district section of the regs and we'd actually move limited office retail into that because that kind of fits in a special district. Um, and then we'd be creating the, um, mixed use design districts. So the MDD Route 25 mixed use design district. And then we'd also be creating a special development district section of the regs because again, the, the design district is an area, the special development district is when that lands on a specific property. And that's what kind of comes before the commission. If they were to view this regulation amendment favorably, what it would do is it would enable for people to bring in an SDD that fits within this and, and then that would establish, you know, enumerate the requirements associated with that individual project. Um, and this can also be used as a tool for when the commission, um, comes around and creates additional village districts and things like that. Those projects within those districts can also be, uh, processed through an SDD. Um, and this is a really popular planning tool that's incorporated into a lot of surrounding areas. As I said, Newtown has SDDs, um, uh, town of Sheldon has, uh, PDDs, Plan Development Districts. Those are very similar. Um, there are a number of other communities which use this planning tool. And I think actually during some of the P O C D, um, uh, committees that we had with, with Francisco Gomes, he actually echoed that this is a really good, uh, planning tool that, that commissions use because it does create a lot of flexibility, um, but also control for the commission when they're reviewing applications. So, um, uh, so what we would do is we create section 5.2, which would be, which would establish the mixed use design district. Um, the purpose and intent, uh, would be established for the purpose of creating an overlay zone that identifies the district and provides regulations and design guidelines that will provide for compatible economic development along the 25 corridor. The district will exist for the purpose of guiding development in a way that will provide for compatible economic development, um, enhance the overall character and control traffic access along the Route 25 corridor. So first you have to be designated as, designated as a design district. Um, and, uh, it will encompass a portion of Route 25 corridor extending from the town line with Trumbull, north to the intersection of Brook Street and then from the town line with Newtown, south to 525 Main Street. Um, to be included in the MDD, parcels must meet the following requirements. They must have direct access to Route 25. They must be within, um, 1,500 feet of the state right of way. And the minimum district size shall be two acres and can be comprised of multiple parcels so that if, so that if, uh, in order to become an SDD, you have to be at least two acres in size. But it does allow for, if there were two parcels that wanted to work together, that were each one acre, they could be combined to become an SDD. Um, so, uh, permitted uses, all the principal and accessory uses allowed in the underlying zone are permitted. Um, uh, that, that are, that are permitted under site plan or special exception permit. But products within the S D, within, within the MDD are also eligible to pursue multifamily residential uses in addition to those permitted in the underlying zones. Um, so essentially what this does is it allows for whatever uses are allowed in the underlying zones, those are good. But, but you could also apply for that mixed, uh, for mixed use and multifamily uses as part of an, uh, part of an MDD project. So we established the design review process. Um, and what it does is it talks about, uh, you know, except for single family, the designer view process that has to be followed for a project that has to go to the architectural review board. Um, we also created some design review guidelines, um, and to help encourage, uh, you know, they, we wanted to create some additional requirements regarding the architecture because a lot of times now the commission doesn't have a lot of control over architectural elements. So we wanted to create some specific, um, uh, criteria that would be followed as part of a, of an MDD. So, um, you know, we wanted to make sure that projects are designed to be consistent with the intent to maintain and enhance a New England character in a corridor for areas that are visible from public roadways. Help accomplish those, uh, purposes of that section, it would have to, um, they would have to incorporate some access management provisions so that no driveways curb cuts can be located closer than 100 feet from any intersection on Route 25. Driveways, uh, curb cuts within a single property must be separated by at least 120 feet. And then shared access between adjacent parking lots should be provided when possible, wherever practicable. We also talked, create some requirements for some facade materials. We want to establish that facade materials shall include some wood, brick, stone, decorative masonry or similar materials as approved by the commission. We want to, again, we want to kind of create, while this gives, uh, an applicant some additional flexibility, there should also be some additional, um, design requirements put onto them, um, through this regulation. Uh, we also have some other general requirements for a project. It has to be able to handle, uh, sanitary and septic. Um, uh, no building can be, uh, occupied with a permanent CO unless a permanent CO has been issued. This is consistent with a lot of other, uh, sections of the regulations. Um, no more than 30 dwelling units can be contained within, within a single building. And, um, they have to be designed to include community amenities, um, such as a clubhouse, pool, park, trails or sports courts. Because we want to make sure that if someone's going to propose to have, you know, to, to, to benefit from this mixed use design district, that they're putting in some additional amenities that's going to make that project potentially, you know, viable and successful. Um, we also created some density and dimensional requirements as part of the MDD. Um, so we established a couple of things can, uh, as it pertains to the multifamily aspect. So, um, for multifamily units, um, uh, we established a 15 unit per acre, a per gross acre of the parcel computed by multiplying the parcel gross acreage by 15. Um, the, we established a building height for the MDD, which would be, uh, shall not exceed three stories or 42 feet in height. And that a basement won't be considered a story. For the vertical design, we, we, we wanted to take a, a close look at how these properties and projects could be managed. And we saw a very, uh, we wanted to make a distinction between, um, mixed use properties that are on smaller sized lots, consistent with what the commission just approved with the mixed use on, um, in some of the commercial districts along the 25. Um, but then also identify and recognize that projects of a certain size may want to be eligible for, um, a different mix or a different, um, component of how a project is, is, is created. So that projects that are from two to 15 acres, they have to require that residential units have to be above the ground floor. So no ground floor units for projects from two to 15 acres. And then designate that the entire ground floor of those projects from two to 15 acres have commercial on the first floor. So consistent with what the commission just approved, we wanted to make sure that those smaller projects have commercial on the ground floor and residential above. But we wanted to make a distinction for larger projects. So what we're proposing is projects over 15 acres in size. They're allowed to have, have residential units on the ground floor and that they're permitted to locate commercial and residential units in independent structures. So we would still require that it, it require a mixed use component. A project needs a commercial and a residential component, but they can be developed in separate structures. So we can have a commercial building, maybe with some residential units above, but then, um, a more traditional multifamily, um, apartment type project that has residential on all four, on all, on all floors. Excuse me. And I think it's important that we want to create control so that only, only projects exceeding that 15 acres are allowed to have that added benefit of, of your traditional residential, uh, units. Um, we also created some floor area requirements consistent with what the commission has looked at for other types of projects. Again, for the smaller projects, two to 15 acres, um, they have to provide a minimum gross floor area of commercial uses of not less than 45% of the overall. So only for the mixed use buildings, 45% has to be commercial. And we just define floor area. And then, um, we also want to create a distinction for the distribution of unit sizes. So that projects for that, those smaller type projects, two to 15 acres, um, they would be restricted to only studio or one bedroom apartments. This is consistent with what the commission's looked at on other, uh, uh, recent changes. But projects for over 15 acres, we do think those types of projects may want to have some flexibility. So we, we wanted to put in a restriction that multifamily units are still limited to studio, one bedrooms and two bedroom apartments and that no three bedroom apartments can be permitted. Cause what we found in our data, um, research is that when you propose a three bedroom unit, that's when you really start to have a potential impact on the school system. And we wanted to make sure that this, this, this regulation doesn't allow for that to happen or run rampant. Um, obviously the commission still has control over every SDD that comes before you, but we wanted to put those restrictions right in the reg. Um, we also wanted to establish some proposed improvements that have to be, uh, incorporated into one of these projects. We need to have sidewalks. We need to have adequate, uh, trash collection and removal. So we put a lot of, of provisions in there regarding dumpsters and, and collection points and maintenance and things like that. Um, and then that's the, that's the, uh, extent of the mixed use design district. So that is what creates the parameter for the design district. The next section of the regs that we create would be the actual special development district section of the regs. And then this is where, um, this establishes the framework on how SDDs are processed in town. So, um, again, it establishes the purpose and intent of what the SDD section is and it's allow for individual projects within the MDD to, to, to take shape. Um, eligibility, it has to be located in the mixed use design district. It has to be in, project has to be in accordance with the P O C D. Um, it has to have complementary uses, have both residential and commercial components. And then, um, designed in a way so that it, uh, complementing, um, you know, creating a positive environment, uh, positive desirable character and complement everything else to be consistent with the town. Um, so that with each, so then for each SDD, there's a couple, a couple steps to it. First would be approval of the concept. So we'd have to propose, we have to state the proposed modification to the zone. We'd have to provide schematic plans, including site plans, grading plans, preliminary plans to show what the project would look like. We'd have to include a traffic impact study so that, um, when someone comes for an SDD, we actually looked at the traffic, made sure that there's not going to be an impact to the surrounding roadway network. Um, for parcels that are over 15 acres in size, the ones that could potentially be just your traditional multifamily projects, um, we want to provide documentation that demonstrates that, that there's adequate septic capacity to, on the site to accommodate the uses. And then also include a fiscal impact assessment to study the overall municipal budget and services because we, we know that there's, uh, you know, whenever a commission considers these types of projects, we know the concern about impact on school systems or, um, fire services or things like that. We want to make sure that if someone's going to bring in, bring a project before the commission, they do all their homework and due diligence before it even comes to you. So that when you consider an SDD and have a great concept, you need to also understand that what the traffic impacts are going to be, what the, um, that there's adequate septic capacity and really understand the fiscal impacts. Because that's, that's something that's, it's a critical component of any application and making sure that the commission has all that data when they're reviewing this initial concept is, is critical. And then we also created timeframes in here so that if the commission approves an SDD and those, uh, schematic plans, that they have to bring in fully detailed plans within 180 days of that approval, um, with extensions or that SDD is no longer, no longer valid. So it, it really kind of forces and creates an opportunity where commissions can receive applications, um, understand a lot of the components that are critical and then also require those detailed plans to follow right behind. Um, again, this is what we've created is a, is a, is an amendment to the regulations which creates a structure and a framework to allow for these types of projects to come forth. And we think we've tried to create a, a number of planning tools, um, to give the commission the control because we feel that the individual planning for a project like this really needs to be on a case by case basis. And you need to have all the information before you, the commission does, to really understand what the potential impacts might be or, or how that might impact the community. So, um, that's the extent of our, uh, of the regulation and what we're proposing with the regulation. Um, I now wanted to ask, uh, Howard Rappaport to talk a little bit about, um, his experience. Howard is a, is a, is an incredibly successful, um, multifamily residential developer who has a number of very successful products in surrounding communities. Um, he has a great track record of putting out, um, incredibly, uh, beautiful luxury apartment projects. Um, he is interested in, in pursuing a project in Monroe that would fall within this, um, this mechanism. And I wanted to have, give him a chance to talk to the commission and talk a little about his experience and, um, some of the things that he sees. So with that, Howard, I think you have to, you might be muted.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, I hope you can hear me now. Um, Kevin, there are some slides of some of the actual communities I've built in Connecticut, which I, I think you'll put up and you have one up right now. Uh, good evening. My name is Howard Rappaport. I am a principal with Continental Properties. Uh, we have a 64 year history of building multifamily communities, including over 1,240, uh, apartment rental communities throughout the state of Connecticut. Um, and what Kevin has asked me to do is to, um, provide for you a bit of a vision of what we have built in other communities and of what distinguishes these modern rental communities from some of the older rental communities that you, you may otherwise be familiar with. Um, and I think that what, what you'll see in these slides, and again, these are actual communities that we've built in Connecticut, is that, uh, what we've evolved to is building what we call lifestyle communities. Um, and, and what that means in, in kind of simple terms is that these projects incorporate, uh, amenity rich environments uh, where people can do everything in one place. So the projects incorporate workstations, fitness centers, public spaces for socializing. Um, we have found that, that our residents today prefer to lease in these types of communities that meet all of their needs and conveniences. And, uh, the way we do that is through a very high level of fit and finishes, both in the interior of the, uh, dwelling units, in our clubhouses, um, which was on the prior slide, and through very, very extensive exterior amenity programs that in many ways resemble, uh, being at a, at a resort. Um, so the, the pools have cabanas, we have outdoor hammock parks, we have fire pits, uh, outdoor lawn games. And, and we have found that today, uh, particularly throughout Connecticut and, and even more so kind of post, uh, or, you know, post pandemic that, that people want the ability to stay in their community, to perhaps work there, uh, to socialize there, to exercise there. And, uh, these have become very vibrant uh, communities that have a real sense of place. Um, one of the things that, that we've done is we've promoted, uh, public art, um, which you'll see in some of these photos. And, uh, we have found that we have been rewarded with, uh, in these communities, by distinguishing, uh, the lifestyle element. Um, and, and I think that what, what you can hope for to achieve by adopting the mixed use design district is a high level of a modern rental community that, that otherwise is probably not available in Monroe. Um, that, that people are seeking out in other communities. And this provides, uh, just any number of housing opportunities for people within your town. Kevin, I'm not sure what else you'd like me to generally speak to about the, the developments that we build. I, I trust in some respect that the, the photos that we're showing will give a better sense than anything I can describe today. Uh, but, but I, I just like to, to recognize that these are very distinctive communities, um, that we really believe will be an attribute to the town of Monroe and that the state headquarters will be proud of.
Thanks, Howard. I think that was excellent. And I, and again, I, I think you're right. I think the pictures certainly, uh, speak a thousand words. So, um, so I, I, I think at this point, you know, um, uh, we also have Greg Kamodolsky with us who, uh, who represents, um, uh, an interested party in property owner. Um, he's here, um, you know, we're here to, I, I think what I'd love to do now is kind of get some feedback from the commission on our proposed language and we can answer any questions on, on kind of the framework or how it's used or how it could be used um, for, for future, uh, you know, for future potential projects in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Soli. We'll go ahead, uh, with the commissioners now and see if there are any comments. We'll go ahead with the commissioners now and see if there are any comments. We'll start with Commissioner Mayne.
I probably should unmute before I talk. Sometimes that does. I mean, this, this, I'm, I'm torn with this regulation, to be honest with you. It, it's, I don't really, I don't really have any questions, but it's something I've definitely want to, I don't, I would not want to close today. It's something I would want to think and, and do more, more research on before, before I weigh in on it. So for now, I don't have any questions at all.
Okay. Then let's go to Commissioner Condon.
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Ambrosi.
Hey, Kevin, up in Newtown, when they, when you have your special districts, they cut that out in certain areas, right?
They do. So, so they actually have a number of special districts. They have the South Main Village Design District, they have the Hollyville District, they have the Exit 10 Commercial Design District. So they, they, what they do is they create these, these different areas of town, they create the, the intent of how they want that area developed, and then individual, individual projects need to come before the commission with that SDD, with that special development district. So, so it's a two phased approach. The first approach is them saying, we like, we like the idea of this type of project in this geographic area, but it's up to an applicant to propose a specific SDD, Special Development District, within that, within that area, and then it also has to meet all these other requirements. So the beauty of it is, the commission has complete and total control of every SDD that comes before you. There's no, you know, there's always concern and risk about, okay, well, if they, if you, if you do it once, you have to do it, you could, if it complies with the regs and it gets denied, you could sue and you could get overturned. That's not the case with SDDs, and that's not the case with regulation amendments. Commission really truly does have control over every application that comes before you, and if you don't like it, you can deny it.
Right, but I think in Newtown, don't they also, if it's in like an aquifer area or something like that, they don't allow that?
Well, they, they do. And aquifer, aquifer protection regulations are, those are, those have overarching requirements that kind of supersede anything like this anyway. So, so, so yeah, so.
They cut that out anyway. They don't even have it in, in that area, right?
I'm not sure. The, the aquifer protection regulations kind of trump anything anyways, and there's also state related aquifer protection regulations. So I don't think it necessarily excludes you from using a design district in that area, but there are, but there are always other overarching requirements which kind of supersede anything that you can do from, or help regulate what you can do under, under a design district.
Yeah, but in Newtown, do they have their, their special designers? Does that go from, like say, on Route 25? Did that go all the way from Route 25 all the way to the end of Newtown? No, it doesn't, right? They, they cut it off certain spots, right?
They do. They create geographic area for that.
They didn't just cut out one big area. They, they did certain sections, right? They would do, you know, say, maybe a mile, and then they would cut off and then do another two miles or something like that? Is that, is that the way they designers?
Well, so they, they create geographic areas. The beauty of online meetings and GIS is you can actually get that real time data. So as you can see through here, I'm just going to show up where the SDD is. So the South Main Village Design District extends, you know, from here all the way down to the town line. So this, this blue area is all the S M V D D. And if you turn on the aquifer protection district, a portion of that actually does overlap. So they do allow that over the entire corridor, but this area that's shown in red has additional restrictions attached to it because it's an aquifer protection area.
Okay. All right. I mean, I like to do a little more work on this and then, you know, I guess it's something that you would bring in front of the subcommittee so we can hash this out a little bit better?
We already have.
No, I understand that, but all these members weren't on the subcommittee when you brought this in before, right?
Well, I mean, we've, 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 we've come to the, the full commission and the subcommittee several meetings for, for several times. Yes, not every commissioner is on the subcommittee, but that's why we're here tonight, because we think that what we're proposing is a, is a good, sound, in use practice that is, has been identified and, and recommended in previous P O C D, even a part of your current P O C D. And we think this is a good planning tool that the commission should adopt to allow for some of these other opportunities to, to come before the community.
No, and I understand that, and I think that maybe we could work on this, but I, I don't know if this is the final answer. You know what I'm saying? I, I, I think we could work on this, but I don't know, I didn't get any reaction from the other commissions on what they thought on this. So, I mean, I, I mean, I'm probably good for now, and nobody else has any questions so far. So I'd like to hear what the rest of the commissioners have to say. But I, I, I would like to entertain looking into this, you know what I mean, in doing this, but I just want to make sure that we cover everything that we need to cover.
Of course.
All right, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Westland.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So it's a mixed use design district. You know, projects and proposed projects and applications like this are kind of why I chose to run for a commissioner. We just pretty much are introducing our mixed use into our, our community here, and we haven't gotten a feel for how it's going with that at all. And now we're suggesting a variant, you know, called a design district. That's very concerning to me. Our Monroe residents right now are enjoying a lifestyle which is, you know, a controlled tax rate as far as I'm concerned. And I feel like this could have a huge burden on our current town services such as schools. It could also add an uncontrollable amount of additional traffic, which is already on a highly congested roadway. I still consider Monroe a rural community, and I believe that this would have an adverse effect on our town's character. I don't think we're anywhere near ready for this yet.
Okay. I mean, you know, to quickly respond to that, I think, you know, part of what we're trying to build into this is that all of those elements can get answered before any project comes before you. And I think that's one of the, one of the concerns that doesn't really exist with the baby step that was taken. It doesn't require a fiscal impact, it doesn't require a full analysis of the impact on the, you know, the school environment or the tax base or anything like that. What this does is it actually requires all those elements to be provided when an, when an application is brought before you, which, which isn't in the current form. And, and frankly, when the, the commission was considering the different way to consider mixed use, this, this method, this strategy was discussed in a, in a meeting, and Francisco Gomes actually suggested this is the appropriate way to do it because it leaves the planning aspect on a case by case basis. The, the, the method that was previously chosen about just allowing it in every B1, B2, and LOR district, it, it kind of relinquishes some of that control versus this method which establishes it on, with a much higher level of requirement on an applicant and, and more discretion from a commission. So, so I'm, I'm a Monroe resident too. I'm, I'm just as concerned about those, those impacts as, as, as anyone. And I think that's part of the reason why from a planning standpoint, this method is a good one that the commission should be using because it's proven. It's used in surrounding communities, and it gives you that control versus allowing uses just within an underlying district. There's a different test there, there's a different level of requirement. If you propose a project that meets all the zoning regs, the commission has very little discretion in denying it. With an SDD, the commission has all that, all that discretion. And they can, they can look at every project, they can look at the traffic impact, they can look at the fiscal impacts, which aren't required in the same manner through, through other means of, of applications.
Well, you know, you certainly put on a graceful presentation on that. And keep in mind, Mr. Gomes is not, you know, looking out for the, for the best interest of the town. We are. I believe that this needs to be, you know, brought in front, in front of subcommittee, and we need, it needs to have a lot more discussion.
Thank you.
Let's go with Commissioner Lupo.
Thank you. A lot of my questions and feedback mirror what's already been said. I am all for promoting different housing options in Monroe. I'm in full support of that, but I do worry about the fact that we did just pass our first level of mixed use, and like Commissioner Westland said, we haven't had an opportunity to really get any feedback on how that's going. I haven't seen any applications come through for it. And our, our plan was, now, I wasn't on the commission back then, but I know the plan was to roll it out in phases based on how phase one went. I feel as though there are a lot of very specific requirements in what you're proposing that I think some committee should sit down and go through so that when something does come before us, you know, if we don't approve it, but someone meets all the requirements, there could be some repercussions there if we just choose to deny it, and they say, well, we met every single one of these requirements, you approved it. There's just some concerns there. You know, in terms of addressing elderly housing, we have some of those things in the works already. So I just think we need to take some time as a commission and read this through thoroughly to make sure we're making the right decision for, for the residents of this town. That's all.
Thank you. So as Mr. Soli did state, Francisco Gomes did address this issue of larger projects coming to town, and the fact that no one's building retail anymore. Not a lot of manufacturing is going to be coming into town. But people do own property in town and want to develop and have a right to develop it, and they're going to develop it one way or another. If we want to have something to say about how that development goes and what comes in and how it's built, then we have to get moving and start writing regulations that give us the control. Right now, there aren't any. This is one way of doing that. I wouldn't accept this text amendment the way it's written. Obviously, we have to make many changes before we accept this text amendment. But this is the way of the future. This is what's coming to Monroe. And if we don't meet it, then it's going to run us over, and we're going to have nothing to say about it. I'd like to ask Mr. Rappaport if any of his other projects have any affordable units, or if there's any percentage of his projects that are affordable.
I'm not sure what happened to Howard.
Is he gone?
I can't, I can't speak to, oh, here he is. Muted.
You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that. In Connecticut, we've built seven different projects. Six of them are all 100% market rate, and we have one community now in the city of Vilfer that we're building that has an affordable 830G component. That was the result of litigation with the municipality, and that has a, an affordable component. But the other six do not have an affordable component in them.
So you're not proposing any affordable components then?
Well, the, the current regulation, the, the current regulation that, that is before you, and again, we, we understand that, and we welcome, and we want to hear as much feedback from everybody so that tweaks can be made, that the commission can view this application favorably. There's no affordable requirement currently included in this regulation. And I think there are a couple different planning tools that commissions can use and, and applicants can use. And, you know, as this commission knows, an 830G application, which is brought before the commission, which basically your hands were somewhat tied because it was under that 830G application. It switches the burden of proof from applicant to commission, and it, it changes how those things are, are, are received. And as Chairman O'Reilly just said, they kind of get forced down your throat sometimes. In, in a regulation like this, you know, the commission has the ability to put something like that in there, but what I'd also like to encourage the commission to consider is there are other ways of dealing with affordability, and rather than necessarily requiring a certain percentage to be affordable, the commission could also either put in that percentage or allow for an applicant to provide a fee to an affordable housing fund, which the, which the town could administer, in lieu of deed restricted affordable units. And that's another very, it's a, it's a popular planning tool used in a number of communities where essentially, you know, if, if an applicant was to come before you and not include affordable units, they would be, you know, they would have to make a, write a check and, and make a contribution into a fund that the commission, that the town could then use to help look at affordable, to kind of create a mechanism to, to utilize that to spur other affordable units in other parts of town.
Yeah, but this town doesn't really have anything set up like that to expand the affordable units that we already have in town. I mean, many of the other towns, the surrounding towns and other towns in Connecticut are going with a mandated percentage of affordability in any large projects. So that's one aspect of this regulation that we're going to have to look at. The other is the density, and the, there's quite a bit that we're going to have to look at with this. Rick, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. I, I have some general comments that I want to share with the, the whole commission. As this commission is aware, first and foremost, the comfort level of the commission needs to be there before a text amendment of this nature can move forward. We spend an awful lot of time on the adopted mixed use regulations. That took years. I'm not saying you have to spend that kind of time, but your comfort level has to be there. This is where staff comes in, working with the zoning regulations subcommittee, and that's been discussed tonight. Very important tool that we use. This, this amendment, however, comes at a unique time for consideration insofar as the 2021 draft P O C D has now been provided to the commission and recommends alternative zoning techniques like this overlay SDA, SDD district to accomplish multifamily developments and other unique site developments for the Route 25 corridor. I have discussed this zoning tool with Newtown, and staff has found overall success with it. And we can invite George, the town planner, to our, our future zoning regulations subcommittee meetings. I think that would be useful. And we can invite George, the town planner, to our, our future zoning regulations subcommittee, uh, meetings. I think that would be useful. Now, as reported to you earlier, uh, with this commission, I have used this technique in Shelton, uh, especially, uh, along the, uh, Bridgeport Avenue Route Eight corridor. Uh, I've also discussed this with, uh, the commission's consultant, uh, Francisco, and he supports it. And the commission is aware of that. That was alluded, uh, tonight. Uh, it's also important to note, uh, again, that the Planning and Zoning Commission will have control over each and every SDD proposal presented to them. If the proposal is found to be unwanted, you simply deny it. But once again, going back, the comfort level has to be there. I saw that with this commission two years ago with the mixed use. We got stalled and then we moved forward. We stalled, we moved forward, and then we finally found some common ground and we, uh, ultimately adopted it. But the, this technique clearly is a useful tool. It's been used and, um, I, I look forward to working with the commission and the applicant.
Uh, so Rick, I have a, a question on, uh, order here. Um, this is now before us in an open, uh, public hearing. I don't think we can go back to the, um, regulation subcommittee to work on this. Am I right or am I wrong?
No, you raised, you raised an important issue. And this is something I'm going to have to talk to the applicant about. Because as the commission has expressed tonight, the comfort level has to be there first and foremost to move forward. So, uh, we have to get there first. So I'll talk to the applicant tomorrow and come up with a, with a, a plan of action. Uh, but clearly this is a useful tool. And it's something, uh, worth consideration. And there's a lot of moving parts in it, but you have to feel comfortable with it. And, uh, like I said, I, I'd like to get George from the town of Newtown before the subcommittee. That would be very, uh, useful because you can talk about things in general, not specifics. But I'll, I'll talk to the applicant tomorrow and come up with a game plan.
If I, if I may, um, Rick, I, I think since, since we have an application before the commission, the commission can certainly view the application in its content and offer comments that they like or don't like and request changes to the regulation. Um, uh, you know, before something is, is, a hearing is closed and, and a final forum is, is before you. Um, I, I think the commission has that ability and, and why, why, you know, I, I, I certainly like and welcome the, the, the opportunity to work with the subcommittee. I also think there's an opportunity to, to do that in this forum and in this setting. Because we've been with the subcommittee, we've been with the full commission informally, and we, we were trying to, to figure out how to move this forward. Um, and I think that, um, we recognize and we understand that this is not a, we weren't expecting to come before you, go through this, this language and close a hearing this evening, not by any means. I understand that some applications take longer to work through. This is something that I expected would take longer to work through. And I'll say that in Newtown, um, I was actually the author of the Exit 10 Commercial Design District. And when we made that application to that commission, it was, um, it probably took four months to get through that process before they closed that hearing and, and, and approved that application, that regulation. Um, so, so we weren't suggesting or, or, or we had no inclination that, we didn't have any inclination that, that this was going to be, we're going to, this is before you and we expect an, an up-down vote right now. We, we made the application to really have this dialogue in earnest to hear the commission's concerns, to hear the, the, the concern about affordability or, or other controls that need to be addressed. Give us an opportunity to, to amend what's before you or, or work through some of those items. Um, I mean, Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, but that is a, a, a possibility with the application internally pending?
Oh, absolutely. I, I just know that there's other options and I'll talk to, I'll talk to the applicant, uh, tomorrow.
All right. So then, uh, yeah, I'd like to know if we're number one allowed to, uh, discuss this and go over this at the subcommittee level. Um, if not, then we're going to have to all do our homework and go over this line by line at the next meeting. With, I'm not really interested in a yes or a no vote at this point. I mean, it, we have to move forward with this. It's a matter of what is it going to look like? And it's quite complicated. Um, as you all know from dealing with the, um, the smaller footprint mixed use, um, SEP that we approved um, several months ago. It did take quite a while and we did have to go over it line by line and we had to take multiple votes. So we need to know if we can, A, start this process in the subcommittee or have to do it in the full commission. So you'll let us know about that, Rick?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Greg Kamidelski. Just a quick comment and, and I appreciate and I'm very sensitive to all the commission members, uh, being comfortable with what we're proposing tonight. Um, you know, I just want to say as a reminder that we have been before the subcommittee in, I think it was late summer, early fall. And I think generally we got positive feedback on what we were proposing. And then the subcommittee suggested that we come before the full commission, which we did, I think in November. Um, and, and we really got no negative comment at that point. And we were encouraged, or it was, I shouldn't say encouraged, but it was suggested that we make an application, which we've done. So I, I'm very sensitive to you all being comfortable, but I don't want to put myself, uh, and my client in sort of this circular trap of, well, we now would be, we made application to the commission and now we're going, going back to the subcommittee where we've already been. So I, I, I look forward to talking to Mr. Schultz tomorrow about how we find some common ground in all of this. And, uh, hopefully be able to move, move this application forward. So just wanted to get some perspective, historical perspective to, to where we've been really for the past year.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'd like to go to the public at this point to see if anyone here tonight would like to have, make any comments or ask any questions about the application before us. Are there any members of the public here tonight? Once again, are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to make any comment on this application? Uh, if not, do any of the commissioners have any more specific, um, comments that they'd like to make or questions?
I have a question. Uh, why not look at North 111 or South 111 as an addition to this?
Well, when we, when we initially looked at this, we, we said, you know, we certainly think that there could be an opportunity on 111, North or South 111, but we wanted to keep it focused on the 25 corridor. Um, just because, you know, some of the land uses there and some of the properties in there, you know, might be more, um, conducive to, to this from a planning tool. The, the other component that, that I think is important to remember is that septic drives all with this stuff. And, and frankly, there's more suitable septic sand along Route 25 than there is in the corridor along 111. So, so that, that's somewhat of, you know, not a controlling feature, but it is a contributing factor. Um, but, but initially it was, we were looking at, you know, it, it's hard, it's, it's hard for a commission to consider a change of this magnitude. And we didn't want to make it such a big magnitude that it was also 111 as well. We wanted to kind of, you know, handle it in manageable chunks and then kind of go from there.
All right. Thank you. And then, you know, I, I didn't mention my concerns before. I was just, uh, coming up with questions, but uh, primarily mine is that, you know, we did spend so much time on coming up with this South 25 mixed use zone. And to throw this on top of it or in place of it isn't necessarily something I would want to do. I do like the idea of this. And I'd be okay considering it on the north end of 25, even if it's a portion of it. Uh, like we did on the south side to kind of see what, you know, test the waters, see what it does for us, see how we like it. Um, so that's, that's kind of where I am. I won't be in subcommittee meetings. So, uh, I'm sure you guys, if, if it does end up there and you hash that out, uh, that would be one of my concerns along with the, uh, the fact that I do think we need to look at, uh, roping in whether it's, uh, as you said, incentivizing, um, or in lieu of, but, uh, the affordable housing and more importantly, the, uh, I think, uh, senior housing. I'm looking at that as an aspect or an addition, uh, to any mixed use plan that we do going forward. That's it. Thanks.
Any other commissioners?
I just have one more, one more question. Um, that I agree with, you know, again, I agree with the plan. I just want to look at it a little further. My only concern, I guess, also like, um, Commissioner Westland had brought up is the school system. That part of 25 lands in Stepney Elementary, which is already busting at the seams. Um, so I just want to be careful as to what it would do to the school district as our numbers have been rising since the pandemic and could rise even further with this. I just want to be um, aware of the Board of Ed and consider it to them as to what this would do to, to the, the current schools. But that's all. I, we're definitely not saying no. I'm not saying no. I just want a little more time to look at it and, and, um, think a little more deeply about it.
All right. Mike, I have one more question too for Rick. If this, if this design, mixed use design district, right? This is something that we don't have to approve if they apply for it, right? Is that what you're saying, Kevin?
Yeah. Exactly right. You have the control over each and every project.
Right. So what does that mean? That means that if they come in front of us and the commission is not in favor of it.
It goes down.
It goes down. And there's no like, we're not, we don't have to because it's a science district. We don't have to approve that.
That is correct. That's, that's where I wanted to educate how they do things in, uh, in Newtown. You know, at the subcommittee level.
Okay. All right. That's, that's all I want to ask. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So as, um, Commissioner Lupo just mentioned, um, and I'd like to reiterate, this is not going to go away. Even though we may not want to have to deal with this, it's in front of us and we have to deal with it. So I would suggest everyone read this regulation line by line. And if you don't understand something, look it up or ask Rick or myself and be very familiar with this document because it's not going away. And if it's not this document, it's going to be another one. And if it's not this project, it's going to be another one. So with that, would like to not going to close the hearing, but we will continue this hearing till next meeting.
Great. Thank you very much.
One more.
Thank you.
Welcome. We have one more public hearing tonight, number eight, RIA 2021 dash O three, file number 1017E, off-street parking requirements. This is a new public hearing. So Ryan, do you have the notices?
Yep. Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, noticed a public hearing to be held March 4th, 2021 in accordance with CGS 8-7D. A public hearing will be held on Thursday, March 4th, 2021 at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via go-to meeting, uh, concerning the following. RAA 2021 dash 03, file number 1017E, off-street parking requirements, regulation, text amendment, petition, application to existing 10.2 to reduce the required off-street parking for an indoor recreational facility from 6 to 3.5. Solely Engineering applicant published invoices, uh, Wednesday, February 17th and 24th. Complete details and copies of all related materials associated with the above matters are on file and available for viewing in the Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices by appointment and on the town website.
And Rick, do you have the exhibits?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Exhibit number one, regulation amendment petition application. Number two, uh, referrals to the Regional Plan Agency. Three, adjacent municipality referral notice. Four, uh, agency referral notice. Five, uh, Norfolk Valley Council of Governments response, no impact. Six, Western Connecticut Council of Government referral response, no impact. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rick. And for the applicant, I believe we have Mr. Soli once again.
Yes. Uh, good evening, members of the commission. For record, my name is Kevin Soli. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering right here in Monroe, 501 Main Street. Um, this is a, I think it's a very simple and straightforward proposed regulation amendment. Um, we are, uh, just an area of the town of Monroe. We are simply proposing to um, reduce the parking requirement for indoor recreation facilities. Um, as we work with clients who look to, uh, bring development and investment in the community, we, we look at a number of different sites and and obviously the zoning regulations and their requirements, um, and parking regs specifically, um, uh, you know, um, are sometimes, uh, subject to potential modification. So we did look at, um, the indoor recreation facilities and the park requirements with that. The Monroe regs currently require six spaces per thousand square feet of indoor recreation. And, um, if you think of, of some of the indoor recreation facilities, and I'll say Ole Soccer, um, on 5 Victoria Drive. Um, what happens is we end up with a requirement for parking that far exceeds what the, um, demand is based on the size of the building and the actual use inside the building. So what we provided as part of our application was a narrative of our proposed change. And then we also provided some empirical data, um, both, um, uh, somewhat anecdotally based on some other indoor recreation facilities in the surrounding communities and what their actual parking, um, what their, what their parking, what parking is provided. And then we also provided some data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which establishes, um, parking demand requirements based on, you know, regional and national studies of similar type uses and establishes what the actual parking demand is for various types of uses. And it's, you know, it's specific in retail and restaurant and uh, fast food and things like that. So we're proposing again to reduce the parking requirements for indoor recreation from six spaces per thousand to three and a half spaces per thousand. And then just to kind of, um, to provide some documentation for that, I wanted to point out some, some recreational areas and parking analysis for some surrounding areas. So, you know, the Newtown Youth Academy, they're, they have an 87,000 square foot building with 124 spaces, so 1.42 spaces per thousand. Uh, the Sono Field House in Norwalk is a, is a hockey rink. They have 0.9 parking spaces per thousand square feet. Um, Twin Rinks in Stamford, 2.11, um, parking spaces per thousand. Connecticut Sports Arena in New Milford, 2.54. Uh, the Darian Ice House, Darian is 3.14. It's a little bit closer. Um, In Sports in Trumbull, um, has only 1.4 parking spaces per thousand. And if anyone's been there, their parking isn't laid out very well and it's very disjointed and, and 1.4 is, is probably low. Um, but I wanted to point that out. And then, uh, Milford Ice Pavilion in Milford has 2.09 parking spaces per thousand. And then, so that's just kind of some empirical data on some surrounding, surrounding uses. But then when we look at the parking generation data that's done from actual demand for different types of uses, you look at like an ice skating rink, um, that's actually, uh, 1.75 spaces per thousand square feet is an actual demand. An athletic club is approximately 3.05 spaces per thousand square feet. And then a recreational community center is approximately one point, is 2.07 spaces per thousand square feet during a weekday and 1.9 spaces per thousand square feet on a Saturday. And then there's just some additional data we provided that shows the actual studies that were done as part of this, where those, um, ratios fall and how they, and how they land. And also, they, they go very in-depth in their analysis. They look at time of day, peak time of day, and they establish what these rates are. Um, so we provided all that data to the commission. And again, so we provided all that data to the commission. And again, um, what, what the, what the industry says is, you know, three is a real demand for, for parking for these types of facilities. And that what we're proposing is, is three point five spaces per thousand rather than that, that more restrictive, um, six spaces per thousand square feet. And while this regulation amendment isn't specific to an application, it's generally changing the parking requirement for, for the community. Um, I, I will say that, that if this commission viewed this application favorably, an application would come before you, um, for, uh, added economic development in the community. Um, I mentioned Ole Soccer before at five Victoria Drive. Um, there's a, a contract purchaser who wants to bring in an indoor lacrosse use to that property, which is essentially like an indoor, um, ice rink that's turfed where they play lacrosse. And those are five-on-five team competitions. Um, and the parking requirement is six per thousand makes that type of up development essentially non-viable here where, um, the actual demand is far less than that. So, so we think that the proposed, um, reduction in parking requirement for indoor recreation from six to three and a half is appropriate. We think that it meets, um, it far exceed the actual demand required for these types of facilities. Um, and we think that it's, uh, you know, we respectfully request the commission's consideration in, in viewing it. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have about the regulation amendment. Again, we're simply looking to reduce the required parking for indoor recreation facilities from six spaces per thousand square feet down to three and a half, uh, spaces per thousand square feet. And, and I will just point out, I think that there's, um, you know, I'm trying to think of where other indoor recreation facilities exist in town. I know there's an indoor recreation facility. Um, uh, there's an indoor shooting academy on Route twenty five, kind of across the street from Victoria Drive. And I think that's actually come back and, and provided considerably less than that six per thousand. Cause again, it's, it's a rate that's just isn't um, realistic in today's, you know, parking and use operations and things like that. So we think that this is an appropriate rate for this type of use and we'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Soli. We, we'll poll the commissioners, starting with, uh, Commissioner Lupo.
Thank you, Mike. Hi, Kevin. Thank you for the, the presentation. I do have one question. And it might be a simple question that I missed. Is it one thousand square feet of building or one thousand square feet of, of lot size?
It's one thousand square feet of building area. So if I was proposing a twenty thousand or, you know, a, a twenty thousand square foot indoor recreation facility, I'd have to provide three and a half spaces per thousand square feet. So three and a half times twenty.
Okay. And I'm only asking, say. No, the, the, that's, that was my main question. Um, I appreciate you giving us the stats for the area because I know I myself have dealt with In Sports on a Saturday morning and um, my concern is after COVID and all the parents want to stay to watch their kids play or practice is that parking demand might go back up again. Um, but I'm, I'm fine with, um, what you presented and thank you for answering my question. That's all I have.
Commissioner Westland.
Well, I think, uh, the standards, uh, may be a little bit outdated at this point. Um, people are finding different ways to travel and carpool and uh, there's alternative methods like Uber and that kind of thing. And I, I believe that the comparables that were presented are compelling and I'm good with it. That's it.
Commissioner Ambrosi.
Yeah, I agree with Rob. I, I'm, I'm good with it.
Commissioner Condon.
I just want to clarify, this doesn't include indoor like gyms, right? We're not talking about an edge situation in Trumbull? Where the parking's terrible?
Um, I don't recall if there's a separate requirement for a fitness center. I think that is a little bit different.
I know you call it a fitness center. I think there is actually.
Yeah. There's a difference.
Yeah, I think we have it as a fit. I was thinking gym and saw gymnasium, but you're right. I think we have it as a fitness center. So, um, yeah, I'm good. As long as, as long as we're not running into, you know, the, what's going on in trouble with the edge where you can't park and can't get out of there. Uh, I'm o- I'm okay with this.
Commissioner Maene.
Yeah, I'm all good for it. It's, uh, it is about time we do make this change, actually.
All right. I have, uh, no questions and we'll go to the public. Are there any members of the public here tonight that would be, that have any questions or comments for this application? Any members of the public here tonight with any comments or questions regarding this application? If not, then we'll give it back to Mr. Soli for summation.
Oh, just, uh, appreciate the commission's consideration. We think that this is a, an appropriate, uh, amendment to the regulations to reduce the parking requirement. You know, I think, uh, and I think that's, that's it. Thank you very much.
Should you like us to close the hearing?
We would, I guess, we would like to, we would, we'd appreciate if the commission would close the hearing and possibly consider the, uh, a decision this evening.
Thank you. Then we'll close the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's it for the public hearings. Next is, um, pending meeting minutes. Everyone has a copy of the February fourth minutes. I hope. Uh, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the February fourth minutes as drafted.
Make a motion to accept minutes as drafted?
I have a motion. It is second.
Second for me, Ambrosi.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion now. Call the roll. This, I believe, um, some. The regular seated members. Westland?
Westland, yes.
Ambrosi?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Maene?
Maene, yes.
And O'Reilly, yes. So the, uh, minutes are approved. Uh, number nine on the agenda is the bond release request. So we briefly touched on this one last meeting and, um, it was a little bit of confusion. Um, but at this point, it looks like, um, uh, Scott Schatzline has recommended the bond release. And this is the release for the five hundred Pepper Street Caruba flavors. Um, and I remember, do we have to vote on this, Rick?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Well, chair will entertain a motion to release the bond.
I'll make a motion to release the bond.
Maene, second.
I have a second. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call the roll. Westland?
Westland, yes.
Ambrosi?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Maene?
Yes.
O'Reilly, yes. So the bond release passes. Uh, we have a couple of pending application deliberations tonight. Uh, I think we can get through because we've already discussed much of them. The first one is S C P twenty twenty one dash O two, file number one six two seven eight. This is ninety eight Enterprise Drive. Um, we have a conditional approval that was drafted. We closed the hearing last week, uh, last meeting and, um,
Mike, I don't believe we closed the hearing, did we, Rick?
Yes, you did. And you asked for clarification on the wetlands. It was an existing wetlands violation. They submitted their application that addressed it. Uh, the application is now in order uh, to satisfy not only wetlands but zoning.
No, but I was understanding that they had, they had zoning violations, no? That you were going to address those?
Yeah, they, they, they're ready to go ahead, Leon, and, uh, build the facility. They're, they're getting a, a modular building out of Pennsylvania and they're ready to go ahead. So i- i- it is ready to proceed. So that's the good, that's the good, uh, issue.
So it's going to address the violations that were on the property, property previously?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, then, um, is there any other discussion on, um, ninety eight Enterprise Drive? Well, you know, before we do that, Rick, why don't you run through the draft approval? So everyone knows what we're talking about.
Okay, uh, whereas the commission is considering the application for the construction of a nine thousand square foot industrial building with support parking and site development improvements. A property located at ninety eight Enterprise Drive. Property consists of four point seven four acres. The, whereas the, uh, during the course of review, the commission notes the following. Front and, and access is from Enterprise Drive. The site is not within five hundred feet of the town boundary. Uh, site's located in the West Quantic Public Watershed area. Site is, is not subject to any conservation easement or does not include areas of one under your floodplain. The site does include wetlands. The Wetlands Commission, uh, permit, I W U C twenty eighteen dash O one four, uh, R A one, uh, was approved in two thousand eighteen and extended for ninety days at the Wetlands meeting on January twenty seventh, twenty twenty one. A favorable review by the Monroe Architectural Review Board was received. Now therefore be resolved by the commission. Following. Issues are noted. The proposed action is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. The location, nature, height and design of the proposed building is consistent with all applicable I two district standards. Proposed exterior's lighting will be dark sky compliant. Site will be served by public water and subsurface sanitary system. Compliant off-street parking and loading facilities are proposed. All-site access and parking areas will be paved in line with curbing with facilities for collection and treatment of stormwater runoff. Design of proposed action has incorporate all the comments and recommendations of town staff and applicable reviewing agencies. So a motion is in order, Mr. Chairman, and then a roll call vote. And the, if the commission acts favorably, the, uh, conditions are that the site development plans shall be signed by the chair. Notice of the decision shall be posted in the, uh, voices. And the, uh, all, all the requirements have to be submitted within a hundred and eighty days. So a motion is in order, Mr. Chairman, and a second. And a roll call vote.
So they, um, the, um, application approval, draft application approval was sent to everybody this afternoon. Um, is there any discussion? If not, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the, um, pending application as drafted.
I make a motion to accept the application as drafted.
And I have a second. We'll call the roll. Westland?
Westland, yes.
Ambrosi?
No.
Condon?
Yes.
Maene?
Yes.
And O'Reilly, yes. The eyes have it, four to one. So motion passes. The second pending application is S T P twenty twenty dash O five, file number one four five. This is one ninety five, two oh one and two eleven Main Street, otherwise known as, um, the, um, affordable housing, the senior housing. Um, I believe everyone has a copy of the draft approval. I think that was sent out today as well. Um, Rick, do you want to, um, summarize the draft approval?
Okay, the commission has considered an application for a site development plan received from Connecticut Housing Partners to construct forty nine affordable housing units with support parking and site development improvements. Subject property consists of approximately two point oh eight acres located in the westerly side of one ninety five, two oh one and two eleven Main Street, Route twenty five within an affordable housing district, which said district became effective February twenty six, twenty twenty one. This is the last phase of this overall, uh, site development proposal. During the course of its review, the commission noted the following. Site served by public water and private onsite septic system. The affordable housing development received the favorable recommendation from the Monroe, uh, Architectural Review Board. Commission reviewed the proposal at a duly noticed public hearing on January twenty first, twenty twenty one, which was continued to and closed on February fourth, twenty twenty one. Now therefore be resolved, the commission notes the following. The development was submitted in accordance with section eight dash thirty G, this state of Connecticut's Affordable Housing statute. B, the development will be served by public water supply and subsurface sanitary septic system. And as noted at the public hearing, there is a reserve area. C, adequate off-street parking and loading facilities will be provided for the facility. D, the proposal has incorporated comments and recommendations of town staff and applicable reviewing agencies. Most notably sidewalks come all the way down. And lastly, the, uh, development, all regulated activities received approval from the inland wetlands commission. Uh, a motion and second is needed with the roll call vote. And the application uh, is approved because it's in compliance with the, uh, P O C D and meets the Connecticut definition of affordable housing, section eight dash thirty G. Motion second, Mr. Chairman, roll call vote.
Chair will entertain a motion to, um, accept and approve the application, S T P twenty twenty dash O five.
I make a motion to approve S T P twenty twenty dash O five. As drafted.
And I'll second.
A motion, I have a second. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call the roll. Uh, Westland?
Westland, yes.
Ambrosi?
Ambrosi, yes.
Condon?
Condon, yes.
Maene?
Yes.
And O'Reilly, yes. Motion passes five zero. We have one more, uh, item to deliberate on tonight. That's R A A twenty twenty one dash O three, the off-street parking requirements that we just heard Mr. Soli present and that we closed. Um, Rick, do we have a draft, uh, approval of this?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, when we have a text amendment, I really need to, uh, draw something up, up informa- informably. So I just need a consensus from the commission and direct staff for the May, March, uh, eighteenth meeting.
So is anything anyone would like to include or change on this before we direct staff?
No.
I'm good, Mike.
Good?
I'm good with it, Mike.
All right, then, uh, direct staff to, um, draft and approval to for R A A twenty twenty one dash O three. Thank you. Now moving on. We have regulation amendment work session. So I, we, um, pretty much went over what we talked about at the last meeting, uh, once again, um, the only differences I said that I would like to add some, uh, um, I, people that have some environmental concerns that we're really not addressing. And I would like to. There are three things. One is the Quantic River buffer that I talked about at the last meeting. Also ridge line and steep slopes protection. There's one other thing that I would like to add that we will be discussing in the next meeting is, um, accessory apartments. I think the town does a little bit to go out of its way to prohibit accessory apartments. And all we've heard about the developers is how they want to bring in apartments because of the great demand. I think a lot of people can could stay in Monroe if they were allowed accessory apartment apartments, in-law apartments. So those two items, we're going to continue to discuss at the regulation subcommittee. And I'm not sure about the language on this text amendment that we heard tonight. Where we're going to go with that. We're going to just have to wait, see what happens. Rick, anything else to add on that?
No, but I have my town planners report, so I'll take that up when you get to that.
All right, there isn't any other correspondence. I don't really have any other report. Except to say that I hope everyone's been paying attention to desegregate Connecticut. There's been a lot going on at the state Capitol and around the state on both for and against this push to bring affordable housing out of the cities and into the suburbs. You know, we are working towards their goal. We just passed the Affordable Housing Senior project, which moves our numbers in a positive direction and moves us towards the state goal of 10% affordable. I think by allowing accessory apartments, being a little more liberal with our rules on accessory apartments, that'll move us also towards that goal. As I mentioned, with the text amendment that was proposed tonight, putting language into require some affordable housing in there would also help us move towards that goal. So just keep up with what's happening around the state with the desegregate Connecticut. Any of the commissioners have anything that they would like to report? If not, then we can go with Rick's land use staff report.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. As requested by the commission, I've aired my monthly town planners report and I'll continue to do so at each meeting. It stated March 4. Under zoning matters, ZBA, the March 2 meeting was canceled. Their next meeting is scheduled on April 6. Siding council, no new applications were made to the Connecticut Siding Council for telecommunications facilities. Regulations Subcommittee report, the chairman indicated our last meeting was held on February 22 to discuss a variety of text amendments. Staff is finalizing that and we're going to be adding some new ones to it. Next issue is the zoning enforcement program. The staff inspected property at 210 East Village Road. They have a major area of collection of junk material and the notice of violation went out this week by the zoning enforcement officer. There is a large dumpster and clumps of junk material scattered. So that's going to be addressed. The next issue is something that's been weighing heavily on the commission, 485 Pepper Street, the Grassill Construction. Now, it's important to note that they are currently using that site for staging area for the reconstruction of Pepper Street. But that that's not to say that there isn't any violations. I spoke again to the owner today. The Z the Z E O and myself are going there weekly. He has assured the commission that he has stopped bringing in material for purposes of sorting and then reselling. But there's problems there. We have to address it and we will. But I want to convey to the commission that we're talking to Mr. Grassill weekly. And I explained to him, the commission is not going to tolerate illegal activities on that site. There's problems enough with using it as a staging area for the reconstruction of Pepper Street. We don't need these other activities occurring at the same time. But he is proceeding with building his recycling facility. So I will be giving you monthly updates on this because the commission expects it and we are going to clean it up. But the site is impacted the reconstruction and using it as a staging area. Furthermore, starting next week, major work improvements on Pepper Street will begin, including the water company drilling. They have to send down their pipes four feet. So the town is going to be doing a major communication effort through the police department, Department of Public Works and the town's webpage. Please let everyone know Pepper Street, that section is going to be severely impacted. It will continue with two-way traffic. But it's going to be a major improvement zone area, you know, reconstruction zone area. So that that's important to to acknowledge that. Anti-blite staff is working with the owner of 337 Monroe Turnpike. That is the house that's literally falling apart. The owner of the property bought it for investment and we're working with him to to knock it down because it is a eyesore and a public safety issue. He does have, he is working on future development plans for retail and professional offices. So check out 337, familiarize yourself with it. Well, I'll probably bring that up at the zoning subcommittee as well, too. Planning matters. 2021 Plan of Conservation and Development. The commission has received the draft. Town Council has received it at MetroCon. Our next step is to file it next Friday with the town clerk and with the Office of Policy and Management at the state level to protect our extension that we received from the state. Please read it thoroughly. We need to further tweak it and we will have another discussion with Francisco. But please read it and make your notes and then we'll have a very productive meeting next time we meet with Francisco. So the next big step is the town council taking it up at their March 8 meeting. They received it last Friday. So they will take it up and if they have comments, they'll send it to staff. Then it will be forwarded to the full commission. Our next meeting, as reported by the chairman, is March 18. And really, the only thing else to report is we have issued seven permits for new single family dwellings. I'm sure that number would be doubled or tripled if we had more building lots because of the wave of interest from New York. It's real. And but the town doesn't have a lot of building lots, as the commission is aware, but we are at seven. The total for last year was 13. So it gives you an idea where we're at.
Thank you, Rick. Any of the commissioners have any questions for Rick? Or any questions?
I have one question. Rick, are they processing over there Grassill's site?
He he has to know. Joe and I are going to go unannounced and videotape everything. But right now, Mr. Grassill is saying he has stopped bringing in material that has been processed before and sold for resale.
So he's not processing over there.
We have to monitor it.
How about how about the site on Garter Road? Any action over there?
That that is item number two. And we're going to address that as well. I wanted to get a good handle on 485 because they use it for staging and they're going to be doing major improvements now. And they need that site to accommodate all the equipment. Because we we want the equipment not to be left on the shoulder of the roads for for a variety of reasons. So the site's got to be able to accommodate all this heavy equipment. We're pleased that it was used for staging because the equipment would have been scattered all along Pepper Street and that's not an ideal situation.
Did he subcontract that thing out to Burns?
Oh, in part land, yes.
Right, so that's not all. That's not all the equipment. Burns has his own equipment.
Yeah, they they removed theirs.
Right, they removed theirs.
Quieter is going to be started soon. And we've allowed to use it for a staging area.
Yeah, but he hasn't done a thing over there, Rick. Hear me? He hasn't even anything over there. And so, I mean, and and the rest of the commission is concerned about it. Mike's concerned about it. I'm concerned about it. And now they're over on Garter Road doing it. So, I mean, we need we need to step up the plate here on what what he's doing over there.
Absolutely. And I'll be reporting to the full commission monthly because we got to we got to stop it and move in the right direction. And we're going to be taking videos and still pictures so we we can document it because that's the way that's the way you stop it. And we'll we'll go unannounced.
Does he have a cease and desist or not, Rick?
What's that, Lamb?
Does he have a cease and desist?
Yeah, Joe issued it last year.
Okay. All right.
So we're ready to take it to the next level if it's needed.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Rick? If not, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion.
Second for me, Ambrosi.
And a second. Thank you all.